Mics, please. Thank you so much. Good morning to all. I'm going to gavel us in for this very important special meeting and ask that we all rise for invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to our Texas flag.
Good morning.
Commissioner Gonzalez, would you lead us in prayer this morning?
Sure.
I appreciate that very much.
No problem. Lord God, heavenly Father, we're here today to, I guess, to give you thanks, Lord, for this wonderful day that just passed in Thanksgiving and remembering you and what you've given us. Give you thanks, Lord, for our families, for their health. Thanks for all our employees in Oasis County and the community. We give you thanks for the blessings you have provided us. And we give you thanks, Lord, because we're here today to continue to do business with the county. And we give you thanks for allowing us to give us the strength, the courage, the wisdom that we need. Lord, we ask you to continue to be with this Commissioners' Court and be with its employees in Oasis County as we continue to operate. In your name, Lord, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
All right. For the clerk this morning, it's 8:38 a.m. And as I said, it is November 30th, 2021. We are situated this morning on the third floor of Oasis County Courthouse at 901 North Leopard and inside the Commissioners' courtroom. I do certify that all Commissioners are present, and therefore, we have established a quorum. I will call on Rebecca for a safety briefing. Good morning.
Good morning.
Testing.
Just want to make sure. Good morning, Judge, Commissioners, and attendees. Our safety briefing for today, November 30th, is being held in the Oasis County Commissioners' courtroom. The restrooms are located on the right-hand side of the third-floor atrium past the Human Resources Office. There is a fire extinguisher located at the rear of the courtroom and also five additional fire extinguishers located throughout the atrium area. Bleed control stations are on every floor. In the event of a cardiac emergency, an AED is located on the right wall next to the Human Resources Office. Participant for today who will be responsible for dialing 911 will be Connie. Participant CPR certified in attendance will be Dale, but remember, anyone can render aid. In the event of evacuation, our egress route will be slowly down the atrium stairs, proceeding out the doors located on the La Pan Street side of the courthouse and assemble in the parking lot across the street. It is important to stay together. Should there be a need to shelter in place, depending upon the severity of the shelter in place, the courtroom doorbord doors will be secured and remain secure until given further instructions from the Oasis County Sheriff's Office or other law enforcement agencies. Our guest sanitizer for the day will be Daniel. Our safety topic for the last day of November is festive holiday decorating. Keep live trees away from heat sources. Hydrate your tree. Make sure your fake tree is labeled "fire resistant." Don't burn wrapping paper in the fireplace or other flame sources. Work as a team when stringing lights above your normal reach. Double-check your lights for safety. Power down before you turn in for the evening or leaving the house. Prevent electrical cord damage. Secure candles. Use unbreakable ornaments if you have children, friends with children, or pets. Skip the fake food decorations if you have children or pets. Beware of poisonous plants. Poisonous are beautiful, but also poisonous when eaten, so keep them out of the reach of children and pets. Keep in mind our uninvited guests, COVID-19. Stay safe and happy holidays. And this concludes our risk management safety briefing for today.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I'll open up just by noticing that we are ahead of schedule and next on our agenda, it says that a public hearing will begin at 9:00 a.m. Are we expecting any, John, are we expecting any guests that you might have? I don't mind waiting till 9:00, but I'm also happy to advance right now.
No, not that I see.
So is it proper then to, would you be in favor of starting this public hearing?
Judge, I do think we need to wait till 9:00 because this is the way it was published in the paper.
All right, well, then we'll have to wait till 9:00. So if you don't mind, I'm skipping E until we get there and ask for public comment at this time. And I just have one, Chris Gale.
He's online.
And Chris, you are here online. Will you unmute yourself? And also, I'll ask if anybody else is online, if you will just use your virtual icon of a hand. Be happy to call upon you after Mr. Gale. Chris, you may proceed.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Good morning. I just real, real quick, I know that there's nothing on the, or at least I don't think there is in regards to Mr. Pimentel, and we, you know, we have talked about that almost to death, I think, the last time we got together. I just, I wanted to make sure of one particular thing that all the Commissioners and you, Your Honor, were aware of, and that's that after the hearing that we had, there were some questions about worksheets and work orders, things of that nature. I was able to confirm, and I had those forwarded directly from his office, the Public Works Department, to the county attorney, a plethora of the worksheets. But more importantly, we had issues in regards to whether or not work orders were ever created in regards to the area that the work was being performed on, and there was, there was quite a few. So I wanted the entire court just to be aware, as I'm kind of assuming you are, is that those work orders were actually in existence, and they were found, and they were forwarded to the county attorney. I think pursuant to our agreement that day, a copy was also forwarded to me, which I just put in my file. But I wanted to make sure that that was clear and that the Commissioners' Court were aware that those were located. And I'm hopeful that maybe some of the, I would say faux pas in regards to that meeting, we're perhaps learning abilities and that everything will be worked out for Mr. Pimentel, and just wanted you to be completely aware of that. And that's really all I had to state.
Thank you so much. And just as a reminder, during public comment, we do not respond.
I understand that.
And so at this time, I don't see any other online virtual hand, but we'll ask once more. And there is nobody else listed on the sign-up sheet, so I'll move on to proclamations. And this first one is Special Hearts Day. It's actually going to happen on December the 8th, and for this, I'll call on Belinda.
And I'm just going to poke my head out. I know those are represented.
All right.
Judge, Commissioners, whereas Special Hearts in the Arts provides individuals with special needs the opportunity to explore art, music, dance, and theater, which gives our community the gift of experiencing the unique and special abilities each talented Special Heart expresses with joy. And whereas Special Hearts Day allows Special Hearts in the Arts, a community platform to share their gift to the world through their own unique abilities. They rejoice in not just one special ability, but all special abilities, whether it be in sports, fine arts, or other unique gifts that each Special Heart proudly and unselfishly offers. Special Hearts Day allows everyone to embrace a reality that focuses on special abilities instead of disabilities. And whereas Special Hearts is a celebration of special hearts, families, volunteers, and community members that provide our county the opportunity to understand that Special Hearts are remarkable contributors to the greatest of our community. Special Hearts Day celebrates the blessing and gift of each Special Heart in our wonderful community. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Commissioners' Court of Oasis County does hereby formally designate December 8th, 2021, as Special Hearts Day.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to have such a declaration.
Thank you.
I've got a motion, a second. Would you all like to address us this morning? We welcome you.
Special Hearts is, hold on. Special Hearts is the place where I go, and I love going to it because I love to do art, music, and dance with all my friends.
We're hoping our spokesperson, Will the Thrill, would get here on time because Will the Thrill will tell you everything there is to know about Special Hearts, so I'm hoping he's going to walk in in two seconds so you guys can hear from him. But I want to say thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, thank you, thank you, and Judge. You guys have supported us a lot this year with the pandemic and with the things that we have had to do to adjust, to keep it going. You guys stepped up and helped us tremendously. So I want to, as the Executive Director, to say thank you to all of you. And that today is tremendous Tuesday, and out of the blue, you guys did this for us again, and it's like you guys care and pay attention. So your office staff is, they're tremendous because they came up and called me and said, you know, we're doing this for you again. And I was like, thank you so much. So I want to say thank you to your office group because you have a great group of people. Your background, they help do so much and sometimes don't get recognized, so I want to say thank you to them. But thank you for honoring us. You're a very good speaker, by the way. Thank you.
Good timing.
There goes another person. That's Ethan.
Great, hi, Ethan.
Have you seen Will the Thrill out there yet? But I just want to say thank you to all of you and your blessing to us.
And no worries if, we can always have him come back up to the podium.
Oh, you'll love it.
Yeah, so we'll just, when you see him, just kind of give me a little signal, and as soon as we get another break, we'll come right back in. But we're so happy that you're here with us. We're delighted to honor you, and I love art, music, and dance, too. It makes me feel good, and so I'm glad that you all get to experience that with this beautiful organization.
Well, we can expect you Saturday morning at nine to 11 at our building, all of you.
Right. I just forgot to tell you, I'm a terrible singer and a terrible dancer, and I'm not a very good artist, but I still love all three.
That's, you just spoke about me. But yeah, 9:00 to 11:00 on Saturday mornings, anybody in this room, please drop by.
And tell us where.
At Special Hearts in the Arts, 3102 South Alameda, right across from HEB down by Driscoll Children's Hospital.
Yeah.
That's our location right there.
By Texan Trail.
Yeah, and just walk in and enjoy.
That sounds wonderful. Thank you.
Yes.
Anyone else like to make any comments?
I would, Judge.
Yes, please.
I want to thank Rudy.
Yes.
For introducing me to Sherri.
Look, he says, what did I?
And Rudy, I don't know if we can open up public comment again, or if you just want to tie in with Sherri, anything you want to share about the group?
I'll just have you sign in for him, John.
I think it's on the resolution. He's just going to talk on the resolution.
Yeah, you're just going to talk.
Well, that's true. That's true.
Thanks, Commissioner. Modest has been there from day one. If I reached out, he's been out there. This is something, an organization that Ms. Davis was my theater arts teacher back in 1980-something that, I'm 50, so she's real old. So she, she, I always had this telling, she taught me, she taught my kid, and one of the things, one of our instructors was, what is your dream? And finally, one of the students turned around to her, what is your dream? So with fellow students and help with people like you that want to keep this program alive, and I appreciate every one of you, and it just makes you, bring you down to earth and give thanks for what we have. And if it just takes a little bit extra, you know, to do something, so Commissioner Modest, thank you for being there from day one, and our kids appreciate it, and it's not about, it's about them. And during the holidays season, it's, you know, we just tend to be a little more grateful, and when we can get back towards our community, it helps us, and I thank all of you for giving back to the community as elected officials as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Rudy. Thank you, Ethan. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Pose same sign. Thank you. And let us know when he comes back in. We have Joel Romo online right now, and so I'm going to go ahead and move this, move forward to item number two, which Belinda will announce, and Joel will give us an update. As they say, our presence is requested, and I think you'll understand why as we make this announcement. Joel, will you yield to Belinda first, and then we'll pitch to you. Go ahead, Belinda.
Whereas the Texas Windstorm Insurance Association Board met in August of 2021 and voted to increase residential and commercial rates by 5%. Whereas TWEA's next quarterly meeting is scheduled for December 7th, 2021. Whereas coastal residents and businesses are still attempting to recover from the economic distress caused by COVID-19 pandemic, as well as continuing to rebuild after Hurricane Harvey. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Commissioners' Court of Oasis County, Texas, is hereby opposed to any windstorm insurance rate increase and requests that the Texas Windstorm Insurance Association take all necessary action to overturn its prior decision.
Okay, thank you so much. And obviously, Joel Romo, you have all the information about the hearing that will take place. Will you go ahead and inform the court and those listening online?
Yes, ma'am. Good morning.
Good morning.
Judge and Commissioners, we've been working closely with Chairman Todd Hunter on this issue. He's helped take the lead and rally the troops. The Texas Windstorm Insurance Association Board of Directors will meet in Corpus Christi at the Omni on December 7th, and he has asked, you know, different governmental entities to submit resolutions in opposition and trying to stop the 5% rate increase that the board has received and adopted recently. He has rallied the legislative delegation from up and down the coast and even some inland lawmakers to submit letters to the TWEA Board in opposition to the rate increase. Not only, yesterday, we had a call with Chairman Hunter that included chambers and different municipalities and Oasis County, as well as a court and other parties, and they're all doing similar resolutions. We need to submit this once it's approved to the TWEA public information online, and we'll work with Belinda on that. I did send an email to all the Commissioners and the judge yesterday with instructions on if they, so please, they can submit their own comments to the TWEA Board of Directors via email and urging them to not adopt this or to re, or kind of to walk back the proposed 5% rate increase. We can resend that to you again. Chairman Hunter is asking to get the word out, really hit them hard in terms of public comment and opposing the proposed rate increase. So with that said, Chairman Hunter is also asking anybody that can attend from the Oasis County Commissioners' Court for the hearing and is willing to speak at the Board hearing next Tuesday, December 7th, to be at the Omni about 8:45, 8:30 that morning. We'll give more details on where the rendezvous room will be, but, you know, we're working on all that with his office and other lawmakers as well. So the action for the Board is, you know, what, obviously, the vote on the resolution, but also in court, or for the Commissioners' Court to also do the public comment, as well as, if your schedule's allowed, to attend the hearing on December 7th and demonstrate the opposition to the proposed rate increase. And with that, I'll stop if there's any questions.
Thank you. So I'd like to, first, let's get our motion in for the opposition so that we can get that filed appropriately.
So moved.
Thank you. A motion in a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 So Joel, we do have a formal resolution now in opposition to this rate increase, and I think all of us will mark our calendar so that we can be present, if possible, and continue to support our coastal bend residents with this quite unfair and targeted rate increase that seems to really go against the legislature's will as well. That's what's so kind of odd about it, you know? It's that...
Not really, Judge. They're pretty odd. They do this all the time. They're just, they just kind of disregard what...
Anybody else?
It's very, needs to be a new board, needs to be restructured completely. It's just a, it's been like this for years. They just don't get it. We're going to, we'll just keep fighting, as we've been doing for a long time.
Keep fighting, but the Board is appointed by the governor.
Well, the Board's appointed based on the slotting. In other words, they need to...
Right, so many insurance people, so many...
Right, they need to re, they need to redefine what the Board makeup is, and they need to have more consumer spots on the Board, and I think that's a, I guess that's a legislative action.
Well, I don't know. I was going to ask Joel that, is that a legislative action, the makeup of the Board itself statutorily?
There is some statutory requirements, and just to add to the conversation, both Chairman Hunter and Chairman, and Chairman Haddado have been appointed by the Speaker to two different legislative oversight committees for TWEA that will probably start having hearings in January.
Okay.
So we do have some strong representation on those oversight committees that will look at structure, operation.
Good.
Funding, everything.
And Joel, would you ask them, because I bet they're already thinking and contemplating if any of those hearings will happen on the coast? And that way, it'll be something we'd like to have on our calendar if they're already, you know, planning.
Sure.
Okay, well, thank you. You, we'll get you, obviously, the copies from Court Administration's office, and we'll see you on the 7th. Thank you, sir. Okay, it's still two or three minutes before 9 o'clock. You know what I think I'd like to do?
We had that final member show up.
Oh, let's do, absolutely. Thank you.
Yeah, they're outside, Belinda.
Thank you. Thank you so much from Special Hearts. And you know, that's their proclamation, right?
Here comes Will the Thrill.
Would you like to do a picture as well? I think that would be nice. Hi.
Hello.
Hello.
My name, my name is Will the Thrill, Priscilla, and I am, I am a Special Hearts in the Arts, and...
Ooh, sorry.
We do, we do silent nights, turkey dance, and we do Walk Slowly. And Ms. Sherri, Ms. Sherri Davis, he's the executive director, and we do arts, music, theater, dance, film, photography, and film. And then, and then we do, we do snack time, and I, we, we do a Christmas tree, scratch it like this, and...
What else? Say that you like, do you enjoy it?
Yeah. I love, I love to do the sign language, language, and I love, I love, I love to, I love to, I love to, to...
Speak to everybody.
Okay.
Don't you like to speak to everybody?
Absolutely.
Yeah. Are you our spokesperson for Special Hearts?
Yes.
He's our spokesperson.
Awesome. You did a great job.
Thank you.
And, and in honor of, in honor of you being here with us to not only commemorate Special Hearts Day, but to remind us that we're all special in our own way, we have this beautiful resolution that I would, it would be my honor to come and present to you and ask if you all would take a picture with us. What do you think about that? Would that be good?
Yes, yes.
Okay, let's do that. Let's do that. Okay, I'll be right there.
Can you look in there? I'll step here. I think it works better here.
Can you get me some paper now so I can protect these kiddos? Let me just...
This one you have a way.
I'm one of the better spots. I'm kidding.
And sure protecting me, I'm going to protect you. I went to get a paper mask. I'll be right back. Okay. And I'm sure I have one in my bag right there, too. So this is the resolution that tells all the great things about you guys, okay? And you can take it back and share it with everybody on Saturday, and you can read it out loud.
Yep.
Isn't that great?
Yes, yes.
You're like an ambassador.
Yes.
Yeah, I think we need to start calling you Mr. Ambassador. I'm going to let you all hold this.
Okay.
Okay? And I'm going to come by Ethan. All right, here we go. Hold on.
Yeah, good job.
Smile with our eyes. Thank you. I'm glad you guys are doing it. Thank you.
Good job, guys.
Good job, good job. Thank you.
Thank you all for touching on guys.
You're welcome.
You bet. You bet. I got to call this lady. Here we go.
Thank you, Andy. Get them on.
Okay. Um, as I signed the TWEA resolutions, we have Carolyn Vaughn, who's here with us, and she's going to sign up. We're going to reopen public comment. Thank you, Commissioner. Yes.
Good morning. Nice to see you all. I certainly missed my parking space from that parking lot this morning. I'm here today because I was out of town last week, and I saw some of the things that happened during the court with Juan Pimentel, and I was really disappointed. I know Juan very well, and I think that maybe information that may have been given to this court may not have been vetted good enough. I don't know. But let me just speak to it this way. When I was on the court, we all got to fix some roads. So I picked three. I was very strategic in picking them. I picked 48, 69, and 73. You all voted on them. We all voted on everybody's roads. I went to Juan, like I always do, and Edward, and asked them what they think about the projects because I knew they were going to be following them. As soon as I went to Juan, a flag went up with him. He was very concerned. He was okay with 48, he was okay with 69. And I picked 48 and 69, by the way, because they divert traffic from 624, which Texas taught needs to fix. And in case of a hurricane, we would need it. They do it in the mornings when the schools are busy. It just diverts the traffic. 73 was one of the roads that I had a lot of calls on when I was on Commissioners' Court. They have terrible drainage, and the roads are awful. So I thought, it is such a long stretch of road, I thought you could probably do it in three phases. And so I thought this would be the first phase. Juan immediately said to me, my family lives on that road. And I said, so? And he was concerned, Judge, because of that. And I said, it does not matter who lives on the road, everyone on that road pays taxes. You don't go by whoever lives on the road and not fix theirs because you're kin to them. I think he was probably one of the best hires this county has ever made. I know what we had before. I know how he is looking at the projects. He wants to save the county money. And Judge, I just think information was not vetted. And so I hope, this court really, I think, his reputation was tarnished, and I know that he wanted it brought to public because he knew he had nothing to hide. But you also take a risk when you do that because people just think the worst. They always do, and that will follow him. So I wanted to make sure that the public knew, I picked that road. I picked it, and this court voted on it. So I don't believe he did anything wrong. I think the court owes him an apology, and I don't think he's got a dishonest bone in his body. And while I'm here, real quick, I don't know what's happened to the dog park. I want to thank you, Judge, for continually pushing that project, and I would ask this court this, that you would not take the dog park off. I was at Hazel Bay's more park two weeks ago. There was probably 15, 20 kids on that playground that we built, and Commissioner Morris, your area uses that as well. Northwest does not have anything like that. And when I came on the Commissioners' Court, when Judge came on, one of the things we talked about was moving forward, not thinking old fogey, but bringing the county up to speed. And, and whether we liken... And, and whether we like it or not, that is an amenity that young people like, you have new homes going in out there, and that plant that they're building in Sutton, those people are gonna come out there. And the dog park, I'm not a big fan of dog parks, I just walk my dog in the neighborhood, but some people are, so it's an amenity that I think we need to keep. If you don't like who's doing it, find someone else, but remember this, money has already been spent, taxpayers' money has already been spent on that. So, I would just leave and say this, I hope this court comes together, because you represent the community. And I hope that somehow, the other employees in this county don't feel like if they do something, they're gonna be attacked immediately without vetting, because Juan's should have been vetted, it really should have. Anyway, I appreciate your time, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn.
We're going to move to, um, item number, uh, I've got, uh, item one, and then, um, JJ, are you okay? You know, yours is not gonna take as long, how about if we move to item number two, that way our Veterans Service Officer can, can continue, um, with the important plans we have for this weekend. He's come to give a presentation regarding wreaths across America, as well as our Coastal Bend State Veteran Cemetery ten-year anniversary celebration, welcome, Mr. De La Cerda.
Thank you, Judge, good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Uh, again, I just wanted to come in and brief you on what's coming up this upcoming weekend, and the weekends to come. This Saturday, December the fourth, twenty twenty-one, at ten AM, the Noises County Veteran Service Office and the Veterans Band of Corpus Christi will be hosting the Coastal Bend State Veteran Cemetery Transitional Ceremony, followed by a ceremony to celebrate the cemetery's ten-year anniversary. During the transitional ceremony, Noises County will accept maintenance and operational control of the Veteran Cemetery from the Texas General Land Office, Texas Veterans Land Board. Immediately after the transitional ceremony, we will move forward with the ten-year anniversary ceremony, in which we will introduce those who had had, who had a hand in bringing a state veteran cemetery to the Coastal Bend. Uh, again, that, this includes Senator Carlos F. Truhan, the Texas Senate Committee for Veterans Affairs and Military, uh, Installations, Noises County Cemetery Committee, and local elected officials. Our guest speaker will be Senator Juan Chui Nojosa, this ceremony is open to the public. And then on Saturday, December the eighteenth, twenty twenty-one, at eleven AM, we will also host the Wreaths Across America Ceremony at the Coastal Bend State Veteran Cemetery. During this event, we plan to adorn every grave site with a wreath for the holidays. We are currently working hard to fundraise for this event, we have encountered some issues with the national shortage of supplies, wreaths are hard to come by in large quantities, so we are reaching out to merchants in San Antonio and the Rio Grande Valley to obtain as many fresh and artificial wreaths in small numbers in order to reach our thirty-six hundred wreath goal. Before the ceremony at ten AM, the wreaths will arrive at the cemetery via motorcycle procession, make one loop around the cemetery circle, and be placed in designated sections. After those wreaths are in place, the ceremony, the ceremony will begin sharply at eleven AM, with the presentation of the honored wreaths at the assembly area. There will be parking available, as well as a registration table for families and the volunteers to check into. Again, families with loved ones buried at the Veteran Cemetery will have first priority in laying of the wreath. Afterwards, we will, we will invite all volunteers to participate, then we will conclude the ceremony. Again, Judge and Commissioners, this concludes my brief on the upcoming ceremonies, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you so much, uh, this is a very special, um, commemoration of ten years. I spoke with, uh, Flint Hills late last week, and they recalled, um, that the day that we opened ten years ago, that they had to delay the opening of the ceremony for over half hour, because there were cars were lined up, uh, just, you know, snaking around, uh, I thirty-seven, trying to, you know, disembark and, and get to the location. Certain things that, that we do, um, are not meant to produce, um, a rate of return. Uh, certain things that we do are meant to honor, um, the sacrifice of others, that is the purpose of the Veteran Cemetery, it's to honor the sacrifice of those that have given all for us and their spouses, to have a final resting place. It's our honor to be, uh, really the keepers of this ground, and on Saturday, I hope, Commissioners, that you will join me in this incredible celebration. We have been able to, in the last sixty days that it's been under local control, really identify for the state of Texas, the needs of our veteran cemeteries. We've been able to, um, communicate more effectively with our state partners, and we've been able to create budgets, uh, for them, and as, I think as a result of our work, uh, you're gonna see in the next legislative session, and you're gonna see hearings that, uh, deal with better budgets to better address, uh, these important, uh, burials places. So please join us, and then, of course, the Wreaths Across America, if you don't know anything about the history of that, just please Google it, all it takes is thirty seconds to read the, the front, uh, cover of the webpage, which will be enough to get you hooked, uh, for the next thirty minutes, to really read about the story of how one man, uh, who sold Christmas wreaths on the East Coast had a few extra one year, and changed really the course of a nation. It's the most incredible, um, it's the credible service, and, um, we wanna make sure that gets marked on your calendars. I also wanna, uh, express our thanks to those that have already reached out across the Coastal Bend to help us with sponsorship, and while we don't have all of your names, uh, perfectly, we wanna thank Turner Ramirez, we wanna thank HEB, we wanna thank Sitco, we wanna thank, um, uh, let's see, help me out.
AEP.
AEP, my goodness, how could I forget, they're our title sponsor, um, and others who have come to our aid, the Veterans Band and Ram Chavez have really just been super. So, yeah, it's just been an incredible opportunity to be a part of a national movement with Walmart, uh, to lay these beautiful Christmas wreaths. We do need hands, and we do need help, so if you are interested, um, and you're listening, please reach out to JJ De La Cerda and our Veteran Service Office. Commissioners, do you have any questions for JJ?
I, just, I'm sorry, could you tell me again the time?
Sure.
For, for which, both, sir?
For the, for the ceremony, for the?
On Saturday.
The, the ten-year anniversary is at ten AM, this Saturday, Commissioner, and then the Wreaths Across America Ceremony is on the eighteenth of December, and it starts at eleven hundred, but I, I, I suggest you get there a little bit early, 'cause we do, every time we have a Wreaths Across America Ceremony, we have about two thousand people show up.
On the, that's the one on the eighteenth?
On the eighteenth, yes, sir.
Okay.
It's, I don't think we're gonna have snow like they do in Arlington, but ours will be a coastal beauty, uh, and I really, this is, I think, gonna be the hallmark of, of what we can do here locally. And although we're grateful for the state, uh, for the amount that they brought forward, the truth is, is that Wreaths Across America is gonna take place here because of our local partnerships and our local advocacy, and I truly believe, had we not been in charge, we would not have been able to, uh, put forth, uh, this kind of effort. And JJ's been going all over, um, the state, getting these wreaths organized, uh, next year, we're gonna preorder, but.
Yes, ma'am.
We, remember, we just took over October one, so it's a very, very special event. Okay, well, if there's no questions, JJ, we're wishing, um, your entire team a wonderful holiday season, as we remember your sacrifice as well.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioner, Semper Fi, yes, sir.
You said you were short, how many are you short?
Well, right now, Commissioner, we have in total a thousand ninety-one wreaths that are secured, uh, we need thirty-six hundred, but we are working, I will be traveling to the Rio Grande Valley this upcoming Monday, uh, with Mr. Ram Chavez, uh, to secure as many as we can from Hobby Lobbies and Walmarts, and then Mr. Chavez will then go again up to the north, to San Antonio, Austin, Houston, wherever we need to go, we're gonna find them, so that's our goal.
And see, wreaths across America, you can actually buy them online, but they, they run fifteen dollars a wreath, and we're, our budget is around seven dollars a wreath.
Yes.
We have fundraised, um, locally, uh, for a total of about thirty-five thousand dollars, uh, which should be enough if we're at the seven dollar mark, but not enough if we're at the fifteen dollar mark, so, again, we're looking for consistency, so if you want to lend a hand, um, with donations, the donations get made to the Veterans Band of Texas, and that is a five oh one C three, and we're gonna highly urge you to do so today, 'cause we need to make these orders today.
Well, I mean, talk to Theresa, maybe I can donate twenty thousand.
That'd be great, sir.
Well, that would be great.
Do we have, do we have the ability? Yeah, do we have the ability to take that out of our?
Five one C three.
Is that appropriate?
Out of your what?
Out of precinct funds or?
I'm gonna have to defer to Dale on that one, I'm not sure, all I can tell you is that it would be a wonderful gesture, here's the situation, JJ's, is being very humble, so Wreaths Across America has a deadline of today. So let me, let me explain, Wreaths Across America has fresh wreaths, um, that, you know, fresh green, so what we've been able to do for half the price is go out everywhere, Ram's been to San Antonio, JJ, um, and we've been buying the artificial ones, but those are harder to come by in quantity, and so if we, if we knew that there is, there's county money for the Wreaths Across America, two things, Dale, one is JJ and I believe we have enough dollars raised to reimburse the county. So if there was a mechanism, JJ could buy the, he could order online today, which is the deadline, and we, we know that we, J- JJ, do you, I feel very comfortable since, since we were the ones that made the calls together, we know these dollars are coming in, they're, they're committed, but you know how corporations, it takes a little while.
There's a lag time, yes.
There's a lag time, that's our concern.
Yeah, I, I don't, I just would, I, I just wouldn't, wanna, wanna know if it's, if it's an appropriate use of it, that's all I wanna make sure before we commit to it, so I, I'm.
But it could be, and the money could be brought back, is what I'm saying, it could be just a bridge, um, if that's possible.
Well, now that the Veteran Cemetery is part of the, a county organization portion of it, it's, it's now legitimate funds to use your precincts funds, and as the judge says, if we get donations, we'll definitely recover the cost back in there, so, uh, I'll still defer to the county attorney on, on legality, but I believe there, I don't believe that'd be an issue.
If you wanna go double-check it, and we can do it later in the meeting.
We can do it later today, if y'all will just do a double check.
Okay, I just wanna be sure we're okay, that's all, but I would.
We could certainly use outside agency funds for the Veterans Band of Texas, that for sure I know, 'cause they're five oh one C three. Um, but if we wanted to do it, I guess what I'm saying, JJ, is make yourself available to us in a little bit.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, we'll call you if we need you to come back over.
Yes, ma'am.
But.
If some, if somebody else gives, and you can do it, tomorrow we'd offer ten.
Okay, thank you, and what I'm thinking, Commissioner, is that we would reimburse it to you if it's fully funded, but the bridge would help him right now place the order, you could work with Teresa and Dale today and order that ten thousand dollars worth of fresh wreaths.
That'd be great, Judge.
And that's a huge, that's a, that's a big.
That's what I can do for the veterans, you know, so.
Thank you, Commissioner, and, and as future reference, uh, we do, we are working on obtaining fresh wreaths now, but for the future, we plan to go to artificial, because these fresh wreaths cost fifteen dollars apiece.
Yeah.
Uh, and it takes about fifty thousand dollars just simply to do this for, for one year, and those wreaths go bad in two weeks, if we can buy artificials, then we can reuse them for the next year as much as possible.
That's why we're happy.
Is that where you're headed, is getting the artificial ones?
That, we're, we're pulling those now, Commissioner, yes.
And those are the thousand we've already secured is artificial, so we're happy about that.
I mean, if we're gonna do this forever.
Yeah.
To have, I mean, that would make a lot of sense, and.
It would.
The artificial, I mean, certainly there's nothing like a, a natural wreath, but the artificial, there's some beautiful, you know, artificial wreaths that.
Yes.
Are more than appropriate and could last for many years, and would be, that would be certainly a, a, a great way to do this, I would think, and.
Yes, sir.
We don't have to worry about fundraising every year, that would be another thing.
And also, um, the red bows, if you wouldn't mind, Commissioners, just Google it real fast, 'cause you're gonna see this image that will just keep, keep you mesmerized, but the red bows, we're purchasing them from the Dollar Store already pre, pre-made, and so those bows can also be, uh, repurposed year after year, I mean, at least for a few years, they'll stay pretty, you know, they'll stay fresh. So, again, this Wreaths Across America, it's just such a major honor to be one of four places in the entire state of Texas to have a veteran cemetery. By the way, our guest speaker, I don't know if you said it, is Senator Juan Chui Inohosa on Saturday morning, so again, for the public listening, for you, the county, please come and, uh, and join us, but as JJ recommends, uh, please get there early.
And that's all I have, Judge.
Okay, we thank you for that.
Semper Fi.
Excuse me, Judge?
Yes.
If it can be done, uh, legally, put, put me down for ten.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner, we appreciate that, sir.
Well, now we know we can order wreaths across America online, and we'll just work the details out later this afternoon.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners.
All right, so, um.
Judge, I think we need to move on to the public hearing.
Yeah, I was just about to say, we're now over, that's what happens sometimes, uh, we'll move to the public hearing, which, uh, is the, uh, purpose of which is to solicit input regarding the selection of five colonias to receive concentrated attention from the Colonia Self-Help Center, Maria Bedia is here, um, this, um, contract is number seven two two oh oh three three for the record, it's, uh, half a million dollars, and it's made available through the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs.
Where, where, are you on grants, Judge?
I'm sorry, public hearing, nine AM.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That is E, letter E, and Maria, go ahead.
Okay, uh, great for reading the agenda item language, Judge, that saved me a little bit of time, this is the second of two public hearings on this matter, the first was held yesterday, um, yesterday evening at six PM at the Banketti Junior High School Cafeteria, um, thank you to Commissioner Hernandez for attending, and thank you also to the Banketti Independent School District for accommodating us. A little bit of background, um, only because this is a requirement of, uh, the grant, a little bit of background, in nineteen ninety-five, the seventy-fourth legislator passed Senate Bill fifteen oh nine, uh, which was a legislative directive to establish Colonia Self-Help Centers in Cameron, Willacy, Hidalgo, Starr, Webb, and El Paso Counties. Colonia Self-Help Centers are funded by the United States Department of Housing and Urban, uh, Developments, uh, Community Development Block Grant, we call it HUD, CDBG, they do have a two point five percent Colonia Set Aside Fund that funds this program. The program is managed, as the judge said, by the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs, we also call them TDHCA. In two thousand and one, TDHCA was able to establish, uh, additional Colonia Self-Help Centers in Valverde and Maverick Counties. This year, the eighty-seventh legislator pa- legislature passed, uh, House Bill thirteen oh one to establish an eighth Colonia Self-Help Center here in New Oasis County. As the judge mentioned, the proposed contract, uh, number is seven two two zero zero three three, for an initial budget of five hundred thousand dollars for up to four years. The funding is then broken down into three categories with applicable limits within each category, the first category is for construction activities, approximately seventy-five to seventy-seven percent of the funds, uh, would go to this particular activity, which is approximately about three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. This money, um, must be used in the five, uh, targeted colonias, which I'll, I'll name in just a minute, um, this will cover rehabilitation per property of up to sixty thousand dollars, or new construction, or reconstruction, up to seventy-five thousand dollars per property. The second category is public service, approximately eight to ten percent of the funding can be used in this category, uh, which would be approximately about fifty thousand dollars. This category can serve all colonias within New Oasis County, so it is not just limited to those five colonias that we are gonna designate, um, and such activities can include technology access, like a computer lab, we can do a tool lending library, solid waste removal events, uh, title clearing, uh, construction training classes, financial literacy classes, et cetera. And then there's also an administrative cap of fifteen percent, this is about, um, thirty-seven thousand five hundred, um, that can be used, um, to carry out, um, the activities of the self-help center, and this can be done through a local nonprofit organization, uh, community action agency, it can be done in-house, but it also can be done, uh, through a, a hybrid of, of, uh, a combination of, of those activities. Under the Colonia Self-Help Center Program, the county would need to identify five colonias to receive concentrated attention from the center. These colonias must meet the following requirements, they must have a Texas Water Development Board-assigned M number, which is the state identifier for its catalog of colonias, they must also have potable water and sewer available. So after taking into account these requirements, as well as a potential partnership with Banketti, uh, Independent School District for the location of the center, our internal team, um, that has been working on this project recommends the following colonias, in no particular order, uh, Blue Bonnet, Cindy Park, The Ranch, Jaline, and Banketti type townsite, which is, you know, the colonias that you see listed on your screen there in that map, thank you, Belinda, for preparing that map. We do wanna note, oh, thank you, Connie, for, um, we do wanna note that the initial contract, uh, term, if awarded, is for four years, however, additional funds can be requested based on. However, additional funds can be requested based on progress made. That would allow the county to select another five colonias down the road and so on as funding is available. I mean, obviously, we know that there's a great need in our community, so we want to ensure the public that, you know, this is a starting point moving forward. And we hope to obviously keep the program going as long as, you know, we are able to administer the program as well as, as long as funding is available. Some of the comments that we received last night, just as a starting point for today's discussion. Obviously, one of the main comments was, you know, more colonias are in need of assistance, which is why I mentioned, you know, this is a starting point for us. We, you know, if we're successful in this kind of pilot project, you know, we can target more colonias down the road. Another comment we received was, you know, the technology access would be very beneficial to the residents' children, not necessarily for the older adults. The tool lending library was of interest, but may not benefit older adults as they maybe cannot perform physical work on their house. Another, several people also mentioned that the solid waste removal and trash cleanups would be especially beneficial in these areas. And then there was also discussion about potential partnerships. You know, $500,000, while it is great when we're talking about construction, you know, there's always the possibility that the funds will not stretch as far as we want them to go. So we did talk about potential partnerships with Home Depot for construction training classes. Workforce solutions for technology access, Delmar College Craft Training Center. You know, partnering with maybe a local bank to help us actually hold the financial literacy classes. Porta Corpus Christi's, the refineries, and the Edward Shell Foundation. So I know there's an action item later on the agenda, but this, again, is to solicit some public input. I don't know if anybody is online, but I also want to open it up for any Commissioners' comments or questions that they have regarding the program.
Okay. Commissioners? I'm hearing very good.
Hi, it's exciting to see this program get to this point. It's come by pretty quick from earlier this year, making sure, working with our local delegation, with Belinda and of course with our lobbyist team and Abel Laredo and Chui Inahosa, who helped pass, get this introduced and passed on the House and Senate side, and of course ultimately signed by the governor, to the point that we're at here. This was never the, the thought that we would be here, but the fact that, that the Texas Department of Housing and Community Affairs really kind of stepped up and said, hey, we are eligible for funding, which initially I don't think that that's what our, our thoughts were, but that we're here, is truly exciting. And, you know, we've always wondered, I think as a court, and I know I have especially, how can we really help provide a great impact for our colonias when we don't necessarily have the funds to do so? And so with this, with this funding coming in place, this is, I think, a true game changer. Will it address all the needs in each of the colonias? No, but I think it, you know, initially for these first five, and then, you know, ultimately hopefully in the next group and beyond, that we'll be able to show sizable changes in how these communities are run, how they are given resources, and how it helps to stir overall growth and hopefully support infrastructure and other needs there in each of these communities. So I want to thank Belinda especially for working hard on this and of course Maria as well. We, this is truly an amazing day to be able to have this before us and to vote on this. And so I'm looking forward to that item later on to vote on it. Thank you.
Maria, I also want to thank you as well and Belinda.
Belinda deserves all the credit, her and Edward.
Well, thank you, Belinda. But I think last night was very productive. Okay, there was not as many people there that I was hoping for, but anyway, the ones that were there were really knowledgeable about the colonias. And it seems like they really want to get things going. So I offer my help however I can. And we are in need of volunteers, if anybody wants to volunteer.
Yeah, it's going to be an all hands on deck. And again, you know, this is a pilot project and I, I don't mean to go, you know, quickly over kind of the notes that I had because it is very important and it's exciting. I mean, I know I'm excited about this. Again, you know, there's, there's so many needs in our community. And that was evidenced by, you know, the Army's Innovative Redness Training surveys that were done this past summer. But now we're finally getting the data that we need to really make a impact in our community. And this is just kind of the first step. So again, you know, I really give all the credit to Belinda. I was kind of brought in at the end to kind of facilitate the paperwork end of it. So Belinda, you know, I, you know, I, I give her all the credit and Commissioner Hernandez for championing this project. Sorry, Commissioner Gonzalez?
No.
Okay, how about you?
Was there anybody online?
Thank you all, everybody.
Was there anybody online that wants to make a comment?
Yes, Judge Hyatt, Jill Strzynek. And I guess for the record, I live at 5495 Sunrise Trail in Robstown, 78380. I also am a senior clerk over at the NCDC. So we're very concerned not just about economic development, but about our community development. So when I saw this as a, you know, the time for public comment, so I went out yesterday to Banketti. I was intrigued by the first couple of words, which were the self-help for the center. And, and that to me was very exciting. $500,000 sounds like a lot of money, but it's not. It is a drop in the bucket. And that was one thing that kind of kept coming up, is that there's so much work and there's so much passion and there's so much that needs to be done. And when you look at 75% can go towards the actual, you know, building and rehabilitation, it's $375,000. So one of the things that I kind of, you know, on the drive home, what I was thinking about was self-help is best done repetitively. And, you know, my son's active duty Navy and it is literally watch one, do one, teach one. And so one of the side conversations that we had was, great, yeah, we could go in and we could do $60,000 per house. I'm pretty sure is the max, if it's a rehabilitation 75,000, if it's a new structure. But if we're going to educate and we're going to teach and we're going to have classes and things like that, you almost get more bang for the buck if you're going to do something repetitively. So if it was, let's just say, when the surveys are done, what, what is the need, right? That's, that's going to be a delicate thing. You got to ask the right questions to get the right answers. So, so what is the need, right? Well, so let's say it comes back as roofs. Maybe people are still struggling post Harvey and they need roofs. Well, your average roof is 4 to 6,000 if you're doing the work yourself. So it's 375,000, 4 to 6,000 each, that's 62 roofs in five colonias. That's 12 roofs per colonia. Now that is teachable. That, okay, well, do you have the trees off the roof? Do you need gutters? How are the soffits? Is it, you know, you have all the TUIA, you have to learn about windstorm, you have to learn about how to prepare for hurricanes and things like that. So the idea of the self-help and what, maybe your house isn't chosen, but while we're out there, we could remove the trees off your roof line for prevention and things like that. So I, I really liked the idea of the classes and how to make this a teachable moment. I also, you know, the repetition, talking to Edward, you know, after, after the meeting closed. If for resources, repetition is easier with, on the resources. If we're going to do one roof, we might as well do four. If we're going to do tree removal, we might as well do the whole neighborhood. And Commissioner Hernandez and I have, have talked about this. And I personally, I'm not a big fan of drop in the bucket. I like impact. And so rather than just fix up one house, if we could, you know, really clean up, and I know that Commissioner Hernandez and Commissioner Hernandez have done lots of great cleanup projects. And you see the impact when it's done repetitively or when it's done en masse. So I just feel like, you know, that, that is going to give you more impact in the community. There was a little bit of, I'm going to call it fear, that we're never going to come back. There was a little concern that if there was a phase two, that phase two would never happen. That we wouldn't apply for another grant, if even the grants are available. So I think the, the marketing for the public is important to say, we see you. One of the, one of the things it says is it says, proposed colonias to receive concentrated attention. And what that means is our colonias should be receiving attention. It's just that these are getting concentrated attention. So how, how can we bring comfort to the people in these areas? That just because you weren't selected for this one project, doesn't mean you don't have our attention. So, so anything we could do for that? And, and Maria mentioned Home Depot. Home Depot loves their veterans. It is their number one volunteering situation. They give the most donations to veterans. So, and we also talked about in-kind donations from corporations. Rather than cash, it goes further for them. And, you know, you're, if you need gravel, you might as well ask a gravel company. If you need staging, you might as, instead of asking for money so that we can get staging to get up on a roof safely, we might as well ask a staging company. So it was a very exciting conversation. I was glad that I went. And, and before I close, I have to say, I went out to the Fields of Honor on Saturday and had a moment. And it was fabulous. There were several families out there. Honestly, I think they were probably at the COVID clinic at the outlets. And man, the flags were standing out, what a feat that was. And it, it was even more beautiful when I was out there on Saturday than it was the day of the event. It just, so well done and I just am so glad for that, so thank you.
Thank you Jill, and you're just such a great asset to the Nuasis County Development Commission. And I think your words are just, just spot on. And I know Maria is sitting here shaking her head and saying that this is hopefully, that the best is yet to come. But what you're really saying is what's known in the business is the economies of scale. And, and we need to be mindful of that as, as we see how we can leverage these half a million dollars, Maria. You know, we, we of course want to impact individuals' lives, but sometimes it makes more sense to do a block rather than a house, right? Or a forest instead of a couple of bushes, the metaphor. I think that, that's well noted. Are there, is there anything Maria that, that you need to, as they say, follow up on or?
Belinda, did I miss anything?
No, just as a point of clarification, you know, as far as the, the services, we would still need to meet certain metrics with regards to the concentrated colonia. So be open to everybody, but we would still, which by understanding the threshold to be pretty low at, at the beginning. Also, just kind of wanted to clarify that the first year that we're going to be doing this, certainly we're going to have to be building this out. The idea is to, to make it bigger and better. It might look a little slow going at the beginning because there are certain environmental assessments that they're going to require that we would need to work on at least for the first six months. And so just, just to point that out.
Maria, it seems to me that once this does actually get established, and there's actually, as they say, the first movement, it seems to me that, that it's going to attract interest. Maybe we should already pre-think how we're going to receive, you know, others' dollars for this effort. I mean, I can just see the Gates Foundation, and this fits perfectly into the Gates Foundation. Fits perfectly into the Sanchez Health Family Foundation. I mean, there's certain foundations that target this type of, you know, population. And if, if we can galvanize our good work, I'm just wondering if we could pre-think how we would accept matching grants, things like that. Just think about that maybe for our future.
What was the other foundation you mentioned, Sanchez?
Well, the, the one that helped fund the Dr. Hector P. Wellness is the Antonio, I believe. I feel, I feel like it's called the AR Sanchez Family Foundation, but it's health-based, you know, it's self-help, but it's focused on health. And then, but not just health, health and education. And then I know that the Gates Foundation is very focused in this regard. I know that, does anybody remember Jeff Bezos' wife's name? She has her own new foundation. Is it Sharon? Anyway, there are some, there are some few foundations that are really focused in this. I just feel like we should. Jill's right, half a million, it seems amazing to me when I look it up on my paper. And then I start thinking about how much infrastructure costs. And then I realize, I, it's very hard to move the needle. And so I think that what we're, our goal in government is to open the door. And then in order to fling it wide open, it's about partnerships. Yeah, and we're welcoming, I mean, again, that's why we're having these public hearings. And it was very helpful to have Jill there last night to kind of, you know, share with us. I had never heard of Home Depot days. So it's kind of that kind of information that we're looking for. So the public notice does have, you know, my office's phone number. I mean, again, we're, we're building this out, we're learning as we go along. This is our first time and we're excited. So yeah, I mean, we're going to take as much input as we get, as we can get, so. Well, and just because Jill's on the line, I can say this to her is, I mean, this would be an awesome time. Every day I, you know, pass by on 44, I see how much progress Amazon Last Mile Network is making. And you can really see that there's tons of activity in there. I mean, certainly not done, but it's very obvious how much work is being done. Maybe this is a perfect partnership with Amazon, given their location geographically and what they do, you know? That's, that's something that we should look at. They have all these different, you know, levels of, of, well, maybe that's something that Jill can check into for us.
Judge, I just moved to close the public hearing.
Before we close, I think there was a written comment on the chats that they had to leave, but they did provide one.
Would you go ahead and read that for us, Belinda?
Certainly. Regarding to public hearing of South Colonia, I'm confident the county's location choice and operation of the Colonia Self Help Center, I ask the court to continue to be mindful and attentive of West Side Bishop, particularly Francis and Harrell Street. We have families out there actively trying to submit USDA paperwork for home improvement grants and could use assistance, and I, I cannot stay on Zoom. Thank you. My email here is if you would like to talk further. And they list their email. Connie, did you have a, a name?
It's Chris Garcia.
Chris Garcia, okay.
And Chris is very involved in Bishop. Okay, great comments.
Connie, can you send that to me, please?
I, I will.
Okay. Okay, so if there are no other public comments from the audience?
Yeah, just, I guess, I don't know, he's not there no more, but we just, we just cleaned Harrell Street and all that streetwork clean last week. So all the trash was picked up and there, all the, you know, so we, we're out there, understand what's going on and there is a lot of depolated houses that are falling apart, but it's, it's still owned by the people, so.
Okay.
Thank you Maria, and thank you Belle for.
Okay, thank you. Hearing no further input, at this time, we, I think I heard Commissioner Chesney.
Yes, ma'am.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll move on to the general information reports. And I note that we have both Garrett Nelson and Annette Rodriguez. So we're going to basically start off with an update by Garrett and then he'll pitch to Annette. And then I'd like to remind the group here, Commissioners, that if you have any questions regarding ERAP, Maria is still here. ARP, I've got some printed material in front of me. And any other related matters, please feel free to bring up at this time. Court recognizes Garrett Nelson.
Thank you. Good morning Commissioners, Judge Canales.
Good morning.
First of all, report that there's no significant weather threats to the region at this time, and that's a good thing. As you've probably heard, I, I was going to, had some things to, to talk about regarding COVID-19. And then we received word over the weekend of this new variant that is coming through. And so it was a great opportunity to, to bring in Annette Rodriguez, the director, to, to come in and talk about that. And so she will be giving a presentation on, on that issue and COVID. So I just have a couple of things I wanted to, to, to get in the record before, before I turn it over to her. First of all, we told you last meeting that the RIC, the Infusion Center that BCFS was, was managing is demobilized. And it did indeed, indeed, demobilize as of November the 22nd, as we reported. They ended up with 2,212 treatments as of 11/22. And so we, we were very thankful for each one of those. And there's no telling how many lives were saved because of that infusion treatment. And there's no telling how many lives were saved because of that infusion treatment. And so that was a great thing. We want to remind people that that's still going to be available. Just because they've left doesn't mean that that won't be available. One of the ways that they wanted to make sure that we reported is they have the mobile unit that they can bring to our area to service the monoclonal antibody for people directly at their homes. And the number for that is 1-800-742-5990. And also, of course, that's on the website, nuacisknows.com, for that information and more regarding COVID. And then I wanted to call your attention, commissioners and judges, to an agenda item that's under the regular agenda, item 10. It was to discuss and consider approval of a drainage project collaboration with the city of Driscoll, including clearing and cleanup of drainage debris and allocation of county funds for that purpose. Just wanted to tell you that the Office of Emergency Management strongly recommends the approval of that project and for the future, any project that does anything to help the suffering of the part of our county that deals with flooding every time we have heavy rain. And so just wanted to get that in as well, that our recommendation for that. Any questions for me before I turn it over to Ms. Rodriguez?
Morning, Annette.
Thank you. Good morning, Judge. Good morning, commissioners. Happy to be here. So I'm going to go ahead and start the update on the Omicron, the B.1.1.529. I think everybody's heard a lot about it, but I wanted to give you more particulars. So next slide, please. So November 9th was the first known confirmed infection was discovered from a specimen collected north of South Africa and Botswana. So November 24th, the Omicron variant was reported to the WHO from South Africa. November 26th, a couple of things were happening very quickly. The WHO classified this variant as the 1.1.529, and they also classified it as a variant of concern. A variant of concern, this was the first, the first, the fifth named variant of concern. The only others were the Alpha, the B.1.1.7, the Beta, the Delta, and the Gamma. And so this made the fifth variant of concern that was named by the WHO. And a variant of concern also signifies scientific evidence of a threat. So November 26th, also the United States restricted travel from eight South African countries, and so that was effective yesterday. And then November 29th, 26 countries have reported cases of the Omicron. And some of these include Canada, Hong Kong, Israel, the UK, Germany, Belgium, South Africa, Australia, and Italy. So none have been confirmed in the United States as of today. Next slide. What are the characteristics of this Omicron? It has a large number of mutations. That's really the biggest threat here. It appears to have over 30 mutations within the spike protein. If you want to compare that to the Delta, the Delta only had nine mutations. This one has 32. Some of these mutations are similar to the other VOCs, the variants of concern. The computer modeling suggests that the variant may also escape immunity. That's very significant. These mutations also may increase the risk of infection with the variant as compared to other VOCs. An evolution of the neutralizing capacity of vaccines is urgently needed to assess possible immune escape, and that's expected within the next two to three weeks. It's unknown how the variant will spread in populations with high levels of immunity. It's also unknown if the Omicron variant causes a mild or more severe COVID infection. So currently in South Africa, they have 24% of their population that's vaccinated, fully vaccinated. Here in Nuasis County, we have 52% of our population that's fully vaccinated. So the problem is 50% of our population is not fully vaccinated. And so that's one of the concerns here. Next slide. So again, the United States restricted travel for non-U.S. citizens from eight countries starting yesterday, just in an effort to slow the spread. We know that Omicron will be here because travel is so fluid, but to slow it down to give us ample time to prepare for it, that's what the ban was about. Next slide. So what causes concern and variants? So some of the things that I'm, I just want to talk about, the main three are the contagiousness of the variant. How contagious is this variant? Well, what we're seeing in South Africa is that the Omicron is taking over as the dominant variant in South Africa. So it's taking over from Delta. And so here, we all saw how quickly Delta became the dominant strain. And so that's what we're seeing in South Africa with Omicron. So it seems to be highly transmissible. Can it escape immunity? And what that means is evade the protection from the vaccine or from even from natural immunity. So you've gotten COVID vaccine, COVID infection, and you have some protection, but now you end up getting Omicron. And so what we are seeing, that it can escape immunity. Again, we need more statistics, more studies to be able to see that for certainty. And then the last thing that I want to talk about is the pathogenicity of the variant. So how severe is this variant compared to the others, compared to the Delta or compared to the others? That's the big question. We've seen that children seem to be affected in South Africa. We've seen mild cases, but we've also seen severe cases. So we don't know the answer, and that's why we need a couple of more weeks to be able to figure this out and see what happens in all these countries where now we know that the Omicron exists. Next slide. When you're looking at variants, you're also looking at can they evade diagnostics and can they evade treatment? And so the treatment is like convalescent plasma. Can they evade those types of things? Again, these are also being researched at this time. So we really wanted to say, don't panic, but do prepare. You know, I mean, we talk about, you know, preparing for hurricanes, you know? We do preparation all the time, so it's good to be prepared. So if you're not vaccinated, but you've been thinking about it, kind of been on the fence, now's the time. Just go in and get vaccinated. If you've fully vaccinated with two MRNAs and your 18 years or older, it's now time to go in and get your booster. So go in and get that booster because that actually increases your protection back up to the 97%. So if you have children ages five or older that have not gotten vaccinated, and you've been considering getting them vaccinated, again, take them in and let's get them vaccinated now. Remember, it takes at least two weeks to build up immunity. And again, use your public health measures in combination with getting vaccinated. And I have that to depict on the next slide. That multi-layer approach is going to be the ones that are the most successful. And I think most of us practice this multi-layer approach. So it's just reminding you. So if you're just social distancing from people, that's not good enough because then here comes somebody and they get real close to you and they're coughing, and you don't even have a mask on, that's not good enough. So social distancing in combination with wearing your mask properly, covering your nose and mouth, in combination with good hand hygiene so you don't touch your eyes and your nose and accidentally infect yourself, in combination with staying out of crowded areas as much as possible or limiting the time in crowded areas, in combination with if you're sick, staying home and also getting tested and isolating yourself, in combination with quarantining those individuals that were in contact with you and also getting vaccinated. If you use all of these multi-layered approaches, you're going to be so much better off than an individual that does not. Next slide. So the vaccination clinics that we have, La Pemera Mall, the Greenwood Senior Center, the Robstown Outlet Mall, the Nike Store, Physicians West, Nuasis County Courthouse, and City Hall. So and I'm happy to say they're all doing very, very well. Next slide. These are our off-site clinics that we have. We have that, we didn't really get these. Edward actually got these for us. We've just taken them over, and so now we're out there vaccinated in these sites. But these are also wonderful sites. The QSR Legacy Event Center, the Goodwill Clearance Store, we're there on Tuesdays and Thursdays, the Follis Parking Lot, we're there on Wednesdays. And so a couple of weeks ago, we were doing about 150 vaccines per day with all of these sites. Yesterday, we were at 930 vaccines that we gave just in one day. So the vaccines administration is going up, and that's a really good news item. And we're also working with CCISD, Flower Bluff ISD, West Dosa ISDs, to make sure that these kids get vaccinated in the elementary schools. Yesterday, we started back at the nursing homes again. We're circling back to make sure that they're all vaccinated. They have boosters. If they're not vaccinated and they want to get vaccinated, we're there for them as well. So our main goal is to protect the community, to make sure that you're aware of the situation that's going on. And any new updates, we will definitely let you know. But please don't wait until we come up here and tell you we have an Omicron case in Nuasis County. Start preparing now. That's all I have if anybody has any questions.
Well, the only thing I want to remark is, would you let everybody know that we are having a COVID briefing in case they want to attend? Will you share all that information right now?
Yes, absolutely. So we are going to have a COVID press briefing this afternoon at 5:00 PM. It will be here in the commissioner's courtroom. And so you're welcome to be here and join us because we do want a unified message to our community about the awareness of the Omicron variant.
And the city will be here with us.
Yes, they will be here as well.
And are there any questions for Annette? I just want to make a couple of quick statements about ARPA here. But before I do that, are there any questions or comments regarding what you're seeing? One of the things that you said, we are doing very well at all our sites, but there is a couple of sites that are doing extremely well. And one of those is here in our Nuasis County Courthouse. So we keep logging in super high numbers here.
Yes.
And so that's a great sign. And it's about these boosters, and it's something that we need to continue to, you know, promote. You should also know that thanks to sort of a collaboration of public health and emergency management and grants, we're working on hopefully bringing forth a new holiday public messaging campaign. And we want to hear from you. So if there's concepts that you have, now is the time to bring it forward. We have a very short window to work with our professionals and to get radio placed and TV placed. But this is really important. I also want to thank the, just the interfaith ministry, all the clergy that has sort of come forward to say we want to be a part of a unified message during the holiday. I think one of our best ads you're about to see on our website, nuacisknows.com, is a picture of a vaccination card, and it says, "This is the best holiday card you can get this year." It's really a great ad, and that's just one of many. But again, like you said, we prepare for every hurricane, every tropical system, even, you know, just inclement weather. We prepare. This really is no different. And so even though we don't have a case, our office has received, and we've already been on many conference calls, we fully expect this variant to be in the United States. It's already in North America, which means it won't take long. We have a very short window to get protected. And until we know more, we need to stay very vigilant. There's a lot of concern from the healthcare community inside Nuasis County. We've been number one multiple years. We're trying to avoid that at all costs.
I think the other thing, Judge, is that while you say that, you know, more vaccines are given here at the county courthouse, that is true. That also reminds us that we have more traffic here. So we have a lot more individual people that come through the courthouse. So make sure that you start using your protection again if you're not, because Omicron is a, there's no doubt in anybody's.
Everybody just reached for their mask. Teresa put hers on. Connie, I got mine in my hand. I hear, you're right. You're saying that.
Let's start now.
Let's start now.
Yeah, so that way, when we do have a case, you know, what we're going to do is what we always do in public health. We're going to make sure we contact trace, we're going to isolate, but we're not going to wait until we get the genome sequencing back for the Omicron. We're going to start that now because we know that people travel, and so we need to do our due diligence. We had 34 cases yesterday of COVID-19. That's kind of our baseline is what we're looking at to see where we're going to be going. But again, use your protections, take care of yourselves and your families, enjoy your holidays, but be safe.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
No questions for public health at all? Okay. I just want to say that on your next court agenda under ARPA, I think probably we'll have Kalen Taylor and the Haggerty team come in. I know that we are just weeks away, maybe just one week away, from receiving our final public input survey information. So again, if you're wondering where we are on that American Rescue Plan Act and all our public comments, and it's coming. It's coming very, very soon. And so I do wish for you to know that that's going to be, as they say, another opportunity maybe to have a workshop. And I've visited with Belinda about looking for calendar dates, early January for that. Okay, if there's no other questions, we'll move on. Okay, thank you, Garrett. We appreciate it. Actually, Garrett, you know what? They will not get a chance to, right, our next court, Belinda, is December 15th. So if you would just stay for one second, let me end with our general information report by saying that Garrett's last day is December 6th, 2020. He was here, obviously, for a short period of time for us to be able to hire a permanent emergency management coordinator. I've been able to do that as of yesterday. Ironically, we haven't been able to get a hold of him. And there's a reason for that. He's out of pocket for this particular 24 hours. So we're going to introduce him to the court at our next court. But Garrett has been a godsend for this entire region because the very first thing he did was get to know Nuasis County, get to know our regional partners. And he had to step in two days before a tropical storm named Nicholas came to see us on the Gulf Coast, along with other serious issues, which never seemed to stop, even though sometimes we don't hear about them. You know, just the last two weekends, we've had two major vessels that had COVID-19 crew members. These are the daily crises that we deal with. And his experience as a fire chief, fire marshal, and emergency management really liaisons over the past 20 years made him just ease into the job. And I wish that we had more time, as they say, but I feel like the relationship has only strengthened between North Texas and South Texas. Anytime North Texas needs anything, I hope that they know they can call on us and vice versa. But we're wishing you the best back home in Lubbock, Texas, with your family for a beautiful holiday season. Please know that your advice counsel and incredible work ethic has made a major difference in emergency management. Every day that we're in a public health emergency is an emergency. So I just wanted to express my gratitude and say we will see you, of course, up until December 6th, and then if needed again, I know you're just a phone call away. So thank you so much, Garrett. Thank you. Move on to the consent agenda at this time, and that's A through R, A through R. Commissioners, is there a motion at this time?
Judge.
I want to pull.
Yes.
I was going to ask if we received a request from Purchasing to pull letter N.
N as in Nancy will be pulled.
And it'll be reposted and brought differently. Yes.
Okay, let's go ahead and have a motion to have that tabled.
That's the one I'm pulling. Is that the one we're going to discuss? That's the one I'm pulling. Is that we're going to discuss that one?
They're going to table it.
Purchasing asked to table that, yes.
All right, I'll make the motion. I'll motion to table, and he'll second it, and you can work with Michael on your questions. And we'll table it to December 15th. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there, is there a motion for the remainder?
Motion to approve, Judge.
Thank you. Motion in a second. I'll second. Is there, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Same sign. Moving on to item number 3A1. This is new motor vehicle web dealer agreement, and I'll ask, is this Michael Cory Automotive?
I don't see anybody here, but these are some standard agreements that the tax assessor normally enters into with different dealerships to facilitate being able to get the titles more timely for the client so they don't have to come in separately.
And we don't know, I mean, it's.
One and two.
Is it the same that we've always used, Belinda?
You can confirm with the county attorney, but I don't.
Is he all right here, Jenny?
I talked with Kevin on this this morning. He said it's the same thing. It's just a name change that they need to take care of, normal stuff.
All right, well, that's my, also my information as well. So therefore, I'll make a motion. And so therefore, I'll make a motion to approve the new motor vehicle web dealer agreement for Corey Automotive.
Second.
And that's a motion in a second. Thank you.
For 1 and 2, Judge, or just 1?
If we could do both, that's great. It's both for Corey Automotive, which is LLCed as Mitsubishi, and then the other one is LLCed as Mazda.
I would second those 2 motions.
All right, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Okay. And then item number 3 is a ratification. It's no cost. It is time only. It has to do with Hanson Professional Services. It's relating to the ADA design for our ramp. Very important ADA ramp at Horace Caldwell Pier Observation Deck. And I'm going to yield to Scott Cross, who looks like he might be literally outside.
Yeah, I'm up here in Port A on the beach and doing some stuff for another grant I'm working on, so I had to do this remotely. I'm sorry about that.
No worries. It looks lovely.
This is just an extension to keep them under contract, under professional services contract, while they complete their work.
Okay. I've got a motion, and I'll second. And just in the discussion, any other interesting comments or items? How are we, you know, how are they doing? I know it's, I know it's just a time situation here, but all good news to report there on our progress, Scott?
Yeah, we're hoping to have by, I think we, December 3rd? Is that the next court date?
December 15th.
15th, yeah. I think we're hoping to bring to you the request to be able to go out for bids on that ADA ramp. We should be done with all the plans and specs. Sorry for the helicopter in the background.
Okay, that sounds, that sounds very good. And just as a reminder, is this going to be vetted by Mr. Pruitt?
Yes, yes. Carol has already looked at it all, and once we get the final plans and specs, we'll send it to him for another review, so that we get all that tied up or cleaned up before we go out with it. And we don't have any amendments.
All righty. Okay, thank you so much. Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. Okay, the next one, Scott, has to do also with the contractor at the Horace Caldwell Observation Deck. That's GeoFill. This is a change order. It's also zero cost. It's all time to get windows in, is my understanding. Would you want to elaborate?
Yeah, the windows, they just finished up the electrical supply, and so they're redoing those windows on the original structure, so everything's pretty and neat. Everything matches up. We also had the whole old structure repainted. So we're trying, we're trying to push for the end of February to basically open this thing up. We still got to go through our certificate of occupancy and fire marshal inspection. The one thing I have to get going on, Judge, that I'm running a little behind on, I should be upfront with you guys, is I got to get going with Ida again at the library. Her and her assistant, I guess assistant director, I forgot her name.
Crystal.
I'll tell you what, those guys are rock stars, man. Between what they're doing and Megan are doing to get ready to outfit the inside of this thing, and Jace Tunnel over at UTMSI, it may be the end of March before we get all the finishing touches inside there, but we've already been working with Romeo and Purchasing on what the lead time is for ordering tables and chairs and all that stuff. So we're working, working through all that, but that's kind of where we're at. And this is just to give the contractor a little more time to finish what he needs to do that he's already been paid for.
Sounds good. I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion in a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you, Scott Cross. We'll let you go. I don't believe there's anything else that needs your attention. I'll double check that with you.
No, ma'am. No, we're good. Thank you.
All right, all right. Wishing you a good day out there on the island. The number 5, please, is direct your attention to the adopting of a payment option for premium pay under the American Rescue Plan Act for Nuaces County law enforcement in the Nuaces County Collective Bargaining Agreement, and authorize a date to issue payments. Over the last few weeks, commissioners, we've been working diligently to come up with a schedule and a process. You all have assisted in that. You've given parameters, but now we're actually ready to lay forth the actual option, the payment option and dates. And so I think I'll ask Dale to just help us outline it. There might be others, Belinda, online. I'm kind of looking, but I don't know if I see anybody. But if we do need any experience, I've printed out everything that Seth gave me from Hagerty on this issue. Go ahead.
We met with Hagerty Consulting, as well as our outside CPA firm to go over this item. I believe we also met with Mr. Smith of the county attorney's office to go through. There's currently 2 particular options that we're looking into. One of our options is kind of an averaging option, and then there is also a option of a bonusing issue. We've worked with Hagerty's team and my team. We still have some small issues that we need to address and working with them. We have another meeting this Friday to work up this. We're most likely going to go with option 1, but we don't want to set that in stone just at the moment, because we still have a few issues to work out, as well as some of the issues I need to do with my payroll system. So at this time, maybe it would be best to go ahead and table this issue.
Okay, okay with that, because we got to have a plan to vote on. However, I do want to send a clear message. I know we've started to kind of get some, you know, questions that have come in from law enforcement. I think what we want to basically say is that nothing has changed on the commitment.
No.
Nothing. What happens is, is that there is sort of the will to do it, and then the logistics to get it done. And what we're working on from your office is not only the logistics on the time, but the payroll process, as well as what we're calling the formula. Is that right?
That's correct. We'd like to see the options that they have. We're working with the legal side of it, because we have several issues on whether there's, there may be an issue in the collective bargaining agreement that does not allow some issues to be done, as well as some of the wage and hours issues, as well as IRS issues that they were addressing. And we want to make sure we don't violate any rules of whether federal, state, or local. And we want to make sure that the balances are there. We've come up with some totals that we have, and once we get everything situated, we're ready to go. But as we're, right now, we're in the middle of our holiday season, and payroll right now is very difficult. And this is additionally, if issue that we have around 1,300 employees, if we can count everybody. So we'd have to add, we'd have to add a payroll strain to 1,500 employees and make sure our payroll work is right. So it's not something we can just do overnight.
Understood. If you had to take an educated guess, so that we can, people are listening in, if you could say, when do you think that they would receive their first supplemental pay? Would you guess that that would be in January?
Yes.
Okay. And that, do you feel confident? Because we would like to be able to say that January would be that timeframe that they can expect it.
We're still working with our software company. That's where the biggest issue is, because when we're working with the IFR situation, there's actually 3 type of thresholds we can't, we can't miss, or we can't do with. For law enforcement, there's not an issue, because we said 150% is not an issue, but everyone else, there is an issue. So anybody exceeds a certain level, we have to stop balances once it receives over 150% of the average salary. And then another issue is they can't receive higher than $13 an hour in premium pay. And then the last issue is, once this has started to beginning, from whenever we start, they cannot receive any more than $25,000 in premium pay. So there's 3 separate thresholds that we have to try to get our software to identify and track and be able to monitor. Otherwise, we have to do this manually, and that'd be, then I'd have to come to you for additional assistance.
And Judge, I think it's, I think it's important that we do reiterate exactly what you've said, that there is not any less of a commitment by this court to do what we did. The logistics just have become a little more nightmarish than when we started all this. So we do, because the judge is right, I've gotten my share. I'm sure others have too, on calls, like, hey, what's going on? And is there a problem? And I keep telling people that call me, no, there's not a problem. It's just, we're trying to figure out the logistics on how to do this. But this court has unanimously consented to doing this, and it continues to be strong in its support to make sure that law enforcement gets the money in the proper fashion that they should get it. So I just wanted to add to what the judge said and make sure that people do hear that from us, because I think it's important that they do hear that from us. And at this point, we haven't found a hurdle that we can't overcome. We've just found a lot of hurdles. So we're overcoming those hurdles as we find them, and we're working hard to do it, and we know people want to get these funds, and we really are trying to do everything we can to get them their funds.
And again-
Scheduled meeting this Friday with Hagerty and my team, as well as the county attorney's office, as well as our CPA firm. And we should be able to come to you on the 15th with a definite option of how we want it to proceed. And at that point in time, I should hopefully have some more direction from my payroll system to make sure, see how we can to work with it, then I'll have a better idea of when we can start.
I just don't want to say January, and then it don't come January. Because we said December, and it's not coming December. And I know we have office schools and all this other stuff that we probably didn't encounter, or knew we were going to encounter, but I just like to say that, because they're already saying, well, you told me that already twice already, you know?
Payroll's not an easy issue, Commissioner. I wish I could say we're guaranteeing January, but there's a lot of issues that we're working with the legal side of it, saying that-
And that's a good thought you said. We're not guaranteeing January.
We're not guaranteeing, but we're hoping to try. And we're doing our best. I got my staff working constantly on trying to work in this. And again, one of our other problems is our software company, they don't work as fast as we like to, and that's why we're trying to bring to y'all at some point in time to replace them. But that's another issue we'll bring up at a later point.
Got it. Yeah, so I think, I think we all understand where we are. So Dale's asking for the action to be a table today.
Yes.
And-
We should have a better clearance on the 15th.
But on December 15th, we should be able to, I'll take that as a motion, and I'll second it. But I think what we're saying is, is that on December 15th, we'll be able to vote on a payment option plan and a date. We can get that far on the 15th. And that's a good commitment from this court. And then the second piece of it is, is that the auditor's office is working as diligently as possible to make this a reality in January. And if that does not happen, it's going to be forthcoming, you know, imminently after January. The first thing to do is, when a court makes a ruling, it has to be vetted for the legal, the legality of it, right? And so that's the first hurdle. And then once we get over that hurdle, then there's all of the other elements. But as I said from the beginning, this is an opportunity of a lifetime that this court has. We would never be able to afford to be able to do this, but for these American Rescue Plan Act funds. So I would ask for your patience, because all good things come to those who wait, and we are really getting some good things done with this ARPA funds. If you'll continue to give us updates, Dale, I think that's the most that we can ask for.
Again, Commissioner, and the judge, on the 15th, we'd probably give you a starting plan for law enforcement.
Right.
Now for the additional employees that we wanted to start on January 1st, that may be a later, later date.
Fair enough. Again, on the 15th, my goal is to have a calendar that we can actually adopt.
Yes.
All right. And all those in favor of the table?
All.
Aye.
Till the 15th.
Aye.
Thank you. Please signify by saying aye. Aye. And I think Kara, everybody else said aye. Post same sign. All right, great. Setting new records for speed. I move to the next page. Right, Kara?
Don't jinx this, Judge. Let's keep going.
Definitely not superstitious.
Yeah.
Discuss and consider any and all amendments to the Nuaces County Commissioners' Court policies is item number 6. Item number 6, 7, and 8 all have legal questions and have been noticed for executive session. So I will move those to the end of the block and tell you that also waiting patiently somewhere is, Belinda, I don't actually see her, on item number 9. We were supposed to announce that early this morning, but she's not here. Okay, can somebody please call Julie so that she can make that announcement? We'll move on to item number 10.
Wait, what do we call Julie for on number 9?
On number 9?
I mean, we can just make a motion, Judge.
Make a motion to table?
All right, motion to, that's fine, if you're fine. She wanted to come and say it, but if you don't mind, motion to table. Item number 9, and there's a motion in a second.
That would be to December 15th.
December 15th. Motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Okay, item number 10 is discuss and consider approval of drainage project collaboration with the city of Driscoll, including clearing and cleaning of drainage debris and allocation of county funds. I'm looking online. I don't know if I knew we were going to move this fast, so I didn't, I didn't have Susan really available till after lunch. But having said that, I think I can tee this up with the help of others here in the courtroom. But the concept here is that the city of Driscoll has a real need for what will be a Band-Aid, but it's an important Band-Aid. It's almost like a stop the bleed. Anytime we have any rain, we're not talking about torrential rain, any rain, we're seeing severe backup of water in particular locations, both east and west of 77, that have been perfectly identified. I believe the street is Austin Street, and I could look that up. But the concept is here, is that by doing 2 things, by allowing there to be a collaboration with the city of Driscoll, that is, they identify the locations. We believe that with proper cleanup of debris, vegetation in specific, and cleanup of culverts, that the next time it severely rains, it will be greatly improved. This is not the, you know, end all to fix, it's not, it's not everything. It's not even close. Now, the one thing that has not been 100% determined is whether engineering is needed if there would be any, like, let's say dredging of those ditches, okay? So what we, what we thought is that we could begin with the concept of including, it to be including engineering, clearing, cleanup. It would be comprehensive, and it would be in the amount of $150,000. That was the amount that they had asked for, and I support this project, so.
Excuse me, Judge.
Yes.
Where would the funding come from?
So that is, believe it or not, Commissioner Modis, who just stepped out, I'll see if we can get him back in. He had originally suggested that he could participate in that funding, and he was going to, we were going to bring it to court to see if any commissioners had an opportunity to, to do that. I'm happy to participate. I guess I'm trying to see if you are, you are too. I don't know if you're getting there.
Seeing that it's my precinct, I'd like to, you know, study it more and see how, you know, we can work this out.
Right, so-
I'd like to table, I'd like to move to table this item, too.
Okay, well, I'll tell you that I don't know if the mayor of Driscoll is-
Well, we need to work with the mayor of Driscoll. I think we need to, my motion is to table.
Right.
If I don't get a second, that's fine.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion in a second to table. I'm going to call for discussion. I will tell you that the mayor of Driscoll asked for this and supports it, and I'd like to ask Commissioner Modis to come in, because he, hold on, there he is. Commissioner Modis, we-
Judge, I think we would have to withdraw the motion to table, because there's not supposed to be discussion while we have a motion on the floor to table. So if we're going to have discussion, they would need to withdraw.
Would you mind, since Commissioner Modis originally worked with us on this, would you reconsider and ask, I'll let you make your motion again, but will you withdraw it so he can participate in the conversation?
For the purpose, yes.
Yeah, just for that purpose.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're withdrawing, so he's withdrawing it, okay? Commissioner Modis, when you stepped out, we moved on to item number ten, which was the approval of the collaboration with the city of Driscoll to help them with their debris removal, and there had been ample discussion with the mayor and the city council about, you know, the, the real fix that's needed, it, it cannot wait. And so the idea here is to allow them to be able to have funding to support this, this cleanup. And the only thing that's sort of left up to a little bit of decision is whether or not, and they'll have to do this, is, an interlocal, I guess, would be required here, is whether or not they need some engineering to work on the cleanup. They may or may not, and, but the, the amount that was requested was a hundred and fifty thousand, and I know at the time you thought that that was important. I had suggested that I am willing to, from my CO twenty twenty-one, assist in this effort. Do you want to make any comments? Commissioner Hernandez would like to.
Can you do that with your COs if we don't own the property? I think it's not property we own, or do we own it?
Yeah, we do. It's county, it's, it would be, it would be an interlocal that would be, that we would fund.
No, I'm saying, my understanding from COs is that unless it's county-owned property, COs can't be used for it, so I'm asking if this is county-owned.
For drainage.
For county-owned property.
For the cleanup of drainage that is in the, is in that area, I think we could certainly find out, but it's my understanding that it would be eligible. But we can, if you'd like.
The specific project, and also the language of the COs in particular.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
And so, I guess background on this, I mean, up until a few weeks ago, Driscoll was in my precinct, of course, now the commissioner, Hernandez's precinct, so I, I do want to commit, you know, to what I had originally indicated to the mayor, which was to help with, with some of their drainage. This is just a drop in the bucket, really, for the overall needs, and we know that we need a, the, I think the tri-county agreement is going to be what really helps fix these projects and, and these communities downstream, but I, I, I do want to commit money to helping fix, or at least begin some work on, on clearing up and cleaning up. Of course, I'll defer to the commissioner, I mean, it's, it's his precinct, and, you know, like I said, I, I would like to put money in, I don't know if you're, if you know, if you have funds available, maybe from your own budgets, to be able to commit to that as well, but, I mean, I would like to help out, you know, get to that, get us to that number of a hundred and fifty thousand so we can make sure that that happens, so.
Commissioner, I'd love for you to put money in.
I know, right? It's like, hey, but, and, and.
Well, and that was because it was his precinct when, when the conversation started, you know, it wasn't.
Yeah, so I committed to Mayor Gonzalez a while back, and so I want to make sure that I, that I keep with.
I have no knowledge of what's being talked about. I'd like to have the opportunity to meet with the mayor and talk with him, and before I commit to anything, you know.
Anytime you do drainage, you do dredge, dredging, you got to have engineering, so.
Yeah. Yeah, so that one fifty for the engineering, I mean, that's, it's a, it's a good amount to help them get started, so.
So I, I guess I've got to ask the question, again, we're going down a path here of helping a municipality or helping a city with their drainage problems, we seem, it would seem to be opening the door for anybody else who asks, Port Ransus, Bishop, Banchetti, Aguadulce, I, I mean, we're, this is.
That's right.
A little troublesome without a policy in place to, to, to just be doing this, and, and I guess I, and is, was this, and I'm not, I know the bishop gave up, or not, sorry, Driscoll gave up their ability to apply for a hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant, was this some sort of agreement to help compensate them for that? Or, I, I'm trying to figure, it's just, it's, it's the same exact amount of money that they gave up on a grant for, so I'm just trying to.
So the grant is for a study that had no relevance at all with actual work, so it's not.
Well, I know, I'm just saying, it's the same amount, so I'm just wondering.
Right, well, that was the amount that they requested. That was the amount that they brought up, so that, it, it is, just so you know, from the American Rescue Plan Act, storm, stormwater and drainage is absolutely one of the three precepts of the entire.
Well, see, did they ask for this because they, did they say to you or, or anyone, because we're giving up our grant, we would like you to give us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars somewhere else?
No.
Okay.
No, they, they, they did not do that, Brent, at all, and, and what I'm, what I'm.
It wasn't promised by anybody else from.
No, sir.
Either, okay.
No.
That's what I want to make sure.
No, it was not.
It's just an unusual coincidence that it's the exact same amount that they gave up their grant for, so I want to make sure, but I do, but my overlying issue really is.
So the dollar amount came from Commissioner Modis's visit with him, and what we're trying to do is solve a problem, which we're doing countywide, which is drainage. You'll see later that we're actually going to be talking about, in fact, we should have mentioned in public comment, we're having a drainage workshop in Banchetti. It's a county-centric drainage workshop that's happening tomorrow, and I believe it's from two to, three to five, from three PM to five PM. Drainage being one of the major pillars of the American Rescue Plan Act and being one of the major public comment, you know, the highest public comment discussions was drainage. What we're trying to do is address drainage countywide. They have a few.
I still think that there's some property there, Commissioner, probably that it belongs to the county, but you have to do an assessment and do a survey of what actually belongs to the county, how much belongs to the county. And this is why I think that, you know, I made my motion, I want to repeat my motion, that we table, because I think Commissioner Hernandez needs the opportunity to meet with the mayor and see what actually they do need, what actually can they, can we give them, you know, and what it's going to take, you know, how much property belongs to us, and we're, you know, come back to the court and say, this is what we're going to need, and so.
Right, I just want to make sure.
I don't want to say a number, and then we don't, we don't use that number.
I, I, yeah, I agree, because it's got to be, I think it's got to be county property or to you COs.
So we'll, we'll be happy to set a, an opportunity up, but just so you know, they're planning on coming to the drainage workshop tomorrow, so you've been notified of that. Hopefully, you'll be there, you'll be able to talk to them tomorrow about the need. Again, this issue was, I mean, only because of a redistricting situation. Commissioner Modis has been talking with them, but they do not believe that, that they have had any assistance, and just so you know, we also assist this municipality twice this year, once with a pump, a water pump, and the other with a TCEQ permit that Nuasis River Authority came to us on their behalf. So the concept is sound. Drainage is sound, stormwater is sound. We have a vested interest as a county, and we can check CO twenty twenty-ones to see if that would cover it, but I would also submit to the court that American Rescue Plan, this is in order to get them started. If you fear a rain, that is a problem, and we're, we can work with them through an interlocal, whether we own a particular, we don't own, for example, let me give you a great example, we don't own their stormwater facility, their sewer system facility, but we have assisted, you know, in that regard. So I think that there are appropriate funding sources, and the need is great, but most importantly, the need is urgent, so maybe tomorrow, and I would submit that it is open season. Every jurisdiction is now placed on notice that they need to come to this court asking for help with drainage. You better believe it, because otherwise, you're going to keep having people at your podium saying that you're not doing anything about it.
Judge, I think, I think that's a really dangerous thing to say, to allude to the fact that this county has some pile of money.
We do.
That we can help everybody with without coming up with a plan. We're going through this entire drainage plan, we're doing this study to see what is needed, we have this big master plan, but now we're looking at, hey, guys, if you've got something you want, come bring it, because we've got a bunch of money, and we're going to piecemeal it. I, I just, I, I just don't, I don't understand that, I mean, they've, they've got.
It's public comment.
I just don't understand this.
It's, well, I don't, maybe you're, maybe, maybe the public comment piece of it.
Can I finish without being cut off?
Well, nobody cut you off.
You did, I'm still talking, and you're talking over me, that's exactly what's happening. So I don't understand why we would, we would do this before we get this drainage study in place, before we go and, and come up with an entire plan to help people. These jurisdictions have responsibility for their jurisdictions, and certainly where we can help, and I, I raised the same issue when we did the TCUQ permit and the pump, that hey, we're, we're setting a precedent here that we've got so many needs in our county that we can't even fulfill, and now we're inviting other jurisdictions that have their own, you know, jurisdictions in place to handle these things. We can't handle all the needs we have that we're responsible for, and so I don't agree with just sitting here and saying, okay, everybody, come bring us your, your wish list, because we've got a pile of money. If we've got such a big pile of money, we need to spend it in Nuasis County, in the areas that we have. We've got major drainage problems in London, we've got major, that's in the counties area, we've got major drainage problems that, that we can't satisfy, and then to take on another project without studying it and looking at it and being careful and not just saying to everyone, hey, bring it, we got it, because that's basically what just happened, I, I think that's a dangerous precedent to set. I agree, I'm, I'll second, I'm not, I'll.
It's already been seconded.
I'll wait for discussion, well, I think it was withdrawn, I'll wait for the discussion because I'm not trying to cut off anybody else's opportunity to talk. I just think we have to have a plan here and not just do this because one person has come and asked, because that's not fair to everybody else, and that's not what, I don't think that's our, that's not within our lane. Our lane is to take care of Nuasis County, and Driscoll's supposed to take care of Driscoll, Port Ransus is supposed to take care of Port Ransus, Corpus Christi is supposed to take care of Corpus Christi. If we start going over these boundaries, then what's going to stop the city of Corpus Christi from coming and asking us to help with drainage too? Because they've got drainage issues in Nuasis County, so I, I, I just think we're really going down a path that we need to be very, very cautious of, and I don't think it's appropriate just to say, bring us your, your wish list, because we've got a bunch of money that we're willing to spend on you, because that's not exactly the, the way this is.
I think most of the time, we, we try to take care of our own drainage issues in our own precincts. We, we have the money, and I think Commissioner Hernandez has some money on his precinct to, for drainage, and that he can use if he needs to use, and I don't think, I don't think he needs to borrow some, unless, I mean, if he needs some, we'll give him some, but, but I, you know, I think that that's why, that's why I think that I table it, because I think it's something he needs to sit down with the mayor and say, what do you start? What do we need, and what, you know, what, what do you want first, what do you want second, you know, and, and we're going to have an engineer? I don't care whether you do culverts, dishes, whatever, you got to have an engineer. I mean, because you got to know where the water flows and how it flows and, and where it goes, so. You can't just say, we're going to address the dishes, and then we're going to take care of the problem. I, I used to think that way too, but it's not, you know, I mean, it's more than, you know, not one step, but it's like ten steps, so, and that's why I don't, Commissioner Hernandez, if I'm out of place, let me know, but I think, that's why I table them, table, I moved to table.
No, sir, Commissioner, I don't think you're out of place, and I appreciate your comments and your help, as, I appreciate Commissioner Modis, but I do believe in doing things the right way, so we can only do it once, okay? And just like the problems we, we have, still have some in precinct one, and we've taken care of some of those, but I do want to table it so I can speak with the mayor, see what they've done on their part, if they've asked for any grants that, from federal government or wherever they might get them from. So yes, I would like to table it, because I'd like to know more about this area.
Yeah, and again, Commissioner Modis, it was in his area, he had spoken to the mayor, this was an item that he was willing to make a contribution towards, and that's why it came up. But I do want to reemphasize that the American Rescue Plan Act has five major precepts, one of which is drainage, and that is why we've been seeking public comment in five different public forums, and we've been asking all jurisdictions. If you don't know what's needed, you're not going to be able to make a good decision. One of the concepts that's come forward is a countywide maintenance and operations program. The plan that we're studying is for major, major issues. Excuse me, sir?
The table and forward.
Excuse me, one second.
We're not supposed to have discussion after that?
Well, you withdrew it, and so we engaged in discussion.
I didn't have the motion. Commissioner Hernandez made the second.
Okay. Commissioner Modis, we worked on this together, would you also support the fifteenth so that we can talk to the mayor of Driscoll?
Yeah, no, absolutely.
And you can maybe help Commissioner Hernandez?
I think this will be a chance to transfer over the, the areas that, that I represented that now Commissioner Hernandez does, and, and he'll be able to hear from Mayor Gonzalez himself, the, the immediate need. I know he wants an immediate fix or as much as possible with, with the area we can help. And I've mentioned this about Driscoll again, and, and all it takes is just to drive into Driscoll, which, by the way, don't go during rush hour, because you're going to be in traffic at least a mile long, while they still work on that bypass, but that bypass is already killing them on one side. And it's, and, and I'm not saying that to be morbid or, or to concede, concede failure, but the, the city is on the path of, of, a, a downward path of shrinking and perhaps dissolving. That, that's language that's been brought up before to me several times over the years working with the city of Driscoll. This is going to be ours, whether they de-annex as a city and go through the legislature to get that help. We've done that already when they've needed law enforcement, when their entire police department was decimated with vacancies. We are doing this with, with drainage and with road fill that they need, vector control spray that we have asked to borrow from One and Public Works to, to lend over to the city of Driscoll, there's on and on and on, that this city, even though they are still technically a city, have, have gone through a lot of problems because they just cannot afford, and their city's shrinking, their tax base is dramatically shift, shrinking. And speaking with Mayor Gonzalez a few weeks ago, he said that they're one and only true large generator of sales tax, which is the stripes there on Highway seventy-seven, see, would see normally sixty to eighty people come in in the morning hours, between six and eight in the morning, now they see six to eight people. And so they're, they're losing money, and so this is our chance to help them, this is a request that the mayor has, has put out, that they, that they want and need fixed. So it's going to be our problem now, or it's going to be our problem later, but I, I'm just kind of, you know, telling you because I've been working in it and seeing it for these last almost five years, and that goes with law enforcement, and, and there goes many other services that are provided there in that area. So that's kind of what we're facing, and we're facing a community who's struggling, we're facing a community that is part of Nuasis County as much as everyone else is, and I, and I understand and hear the reasons why or why not to. We do not have an unlimited amount of money, but I do think that, you know, trying to work with responses that they have is something that we do as good stewards and good partners. I do agree that anything that we do as a court should not be done haphazardly. I do agree that everything that we do as a court should be uniformed in a, in a planned out manner and not just one, one, making one decision for one area for one immediate need, so I do agree with that wholeheartedly, and, and I would just, you know, suggest to look at what our actions have been as a court before and what our actions as a court will be in the future, because that's exactly what we need to avoid. We do need to have one master plan in everything that we do. But I, I mean, I'm willing to still see how I can help, you know, I'm not making a threat, but I'm just saying, you know, you're, I could absolutely put money from my precinct into my precinct and not commit to a precinct that I don't represent any longer, but hopefully this can all get addressed and taken care of by tomorrow. Look forward to the workshop tomorrow afternoon, and hopefully we can get this matter discussed further. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Modis. I invite you and Commissioner Gonzalez, when I do meet with the mayor, if you guys would tag along.
So all three of them can't be there together, but you could invite one of them.
I'm sorry, yeah, either Commissioner Modis or Commissioner Jag. I would invite Jag to come with me, okay, and so we can speak to the mayor, since Jag's also familiar with that area, and so I'm hoping he can guide me. It's not that I don't, I won't make my own decisions, I will, just like I did with precinct one.
Okay.
The thing is to get those people the help they need.
Okay, thank you so much. All those in, I'll look for the table now, please? Table to December fifteenth?
He made it. He made it, he seconded it.
Right, he made it second.
Okay. Should have been now, but, okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye. Okay. Let's see here, we are on number eleven, which is Maria's been waiting for this resolution. This is the one that's the submission of the proposal documents that she's outlined from the Department of Housing and Community Affairs in relationship to establishing the Colonia Self-Help Center, which we had the public hearing on this morning, and to discuss the selection of the five colonias. Is there a motion on the floor? A motion from Commissioner Modis and a second from Gonzalez, and all those in favor signify by, well, actually, are there any other questions at all? Okay. Maria, the only question I had is, I looked in my book, and I was trying to find the map that we had online, and I didn't see it, it might just be amiss. We didn't put them in our books.
Yeah, sorry, they weren't in the books, but I can forward that.
If you wouldn't mind, okay, I'd love, just give me your whole presentation, that way I can compare to what I have in my books.
Okay, sure.
That'd be nice, it was very good. All those in favor signify by saying aye, aye. Post same sign. All right, the next one is appointment.
And I think that was a two-part, right? The first one was the submission.
Oh, that's correct, and we have to actually get the selection, Maria, you will actually call for the selection.
And so the proposal is Blue Bonnet, Cindy Park, The Ranch, Jay Lynn, and Bangette Townsite.
And those are recommended, correct, Maria, by your office?
They'll move.
And so, those were identified this morning. Motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post same sign. And as Jill so perfectly said, those are our levels of concentration, but we're not forgetting any of the others, and so if you are a member of any of the other or represent the others, please know that, you know, we're going to be, the concept is holistic, but we've got to, in order to make this work for this particular proposal, we needed to identify five. All right. Discussing, number, item number twelve is discussing, consider the appointment recommendations to Housing and Community Affairs for the Colonia Residents Advisory Committee, that's also known as the acronym C-RAC, Belinda.
That's correct, and so I don't know if we're ready to move forward with these today. We will, at one point, be needing to identify recommendations as a primary and an alternate to sit on the state committee, which basically makes recommendations with regards to these Colonia projects.
I have two names that I will present to the court.
Please, go ahead. Please, go ahead.
Nora Barrera and Renee Vasquez.
Okay.
And they are members of two of the five colonias that have been declared by this court.
Norma Barrera.
Nora.
Nora.
Nora Barrera.
Barrera and Renee Vasquez.
Renee Vasquez.
And so Nora would be the primary and, okay.
Is it Vasquez or Bosquez?
Vasquez.
Vasquez. Reeve Vasquez, some names, Reeve.
With a V, V as in Victor.
Okay.
Okay.
That's a motion, I'll second it, I mean.
So that's a motion and a second, and we'll get those contact information to Belinda, please. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post name sign. Barrera.
So does the alternate get to participate?
Renee Vasquez.
I think they would be in the case if the primary isn't available.
Will you identify which colonia to Belinda later that they represent? And we'll get that information. All right. And then moving on to item number 13, discuss and consider adopting courthouse security committee badging policy. This is, was tabled last time. How are we doing on this?
This is the same policy that was given last time. It just needs the vote. You've already, I believe, had all the discussion, and it's a $40 fee.
Right. All right. All those, I'd like to make the motion then, please, to adopt this courthouse security committee badging policy. Is it substantively no different than the one we've reviewed before? And ask for a second.
Second.
And all those in favor, any, or any discussion needed? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye, everybody?
Aye.
Kara, if you don't mind, the last two, Commissioner Hernandez stepped out. Okay. Mother's eyes. Discuss, item number 14 is discuss and consider the approval of any overtime hours. None are presented before us at this time, is that correct?
Right, this is required.
All right, so there is no action required here on item number 14. I'd move on to item B1 and ask Maria to come back forward and talk about the submission of hazard mitigation grants managed by Tiedem.
Yes, so the Texas Department of Emergency Management has released funding announcements for two disasters. The first is DR 4572, which is Hurricane Laura, and the other one is 4586 for the Texas winter storms. The applications are due on January 15th. We can apply for one or more projects under each opportunity. So in your agenda item summary that was in your packet, I did list out a couple of potential projects, but we will need to identify a matching, the cash match or in-kind match for these projects. A little bit of background, this is under their Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, which we call HMGP. This program is, does not, so the project that we submit does not have to be tied back to that specific disaster, but it does have to be listed in our Hazard Mitigation Action Plan. So what we've done so far just is, you know, just to kind of get to this point, was I did meet with our Emergency Management Department. We looked through the Hazard Mitigation Action Plan to try to identify the best projects that we could probably put forward, and especially given, you know, the match consideration. So the projects that we would like to submit for your consideration and for y'all to kind of give us direction on which ones we should apply for. The first one is a potable water storage container system. This actually relates back to the winter storm event. So the purpose of this project would be to install a potable water storage container system for the courthouse and jail to support operations during a disaster that could potentially affect the public water supply. It would address hurricanes, floods, tornadoes, just all sorts of different hazards. The preliminary estimate that was in our Hazard Mitigation Action Plan was about $200,000. That would make the match requirement about $50,000. Another project that we would like to submit for your consideration is a foundation watering system and drought tolerant landscaping at all county buildings. Doesn't seem all that exciting, but it would be to design and install foundation watering systems to county-owned buildings to reduce shrink and swell potential and protect the structures from the movement during droughts. As we know, you know, we had a very dry summer. And establish drought tolerance criteria for new landscaping. And just so you know, I did kind of vet some, these two projects. I did speak to Juan about these projects. He thought they're, you know, a great idea. I know he was kind of going to get some preliminary information on them as well. Again, you know, it doesn't seem all that exciting, but, you know, we have very dry conditions here. And if you own a house, you know how foundations shift. So I think this one's a great project. The estimate is about $300,000. Again, that's to include all county-owned buildings. So the required match on that project would be about $75,000. And the last project that we have for your consideration is the Shoreline Erosion Plan and Dune Protection Plan. I had hoped to meet with Scott prior to this, but I see he might still be online. So if he wants to add any, any additional detail on that, but basically that would be assessing all shoreline conditions and updating the Dune Protection Plan and Erosion Plan. That is estimated, and Scott, you can correct me if this is incorrect, but that is estimated about $150,000. So the required match on that project would be approximately $37,500. Scott, did you want to add anything on that particular project?
I'm thinking we may be able to do it for even less now that I have Megan Jones on board. She's already been working through the old beach management plan and the erosion response plan. Just for the court's clarification, the joint erosion response plan that we did when Greg Smith was Chair of DMAC at the time was, is a supplement to our beach management plan. It is not the governing document. It is just a supplement. And they're both in desperate need of updating, reworking. And there's some ambiguous language in each one of them that really needs a lot of clarification so that the city stays in their lane on BCC, Beachfront Construction Certification, which is building code and access. And the county has the Dune Protection Authority, as the court knows, as approved by the state. But we really, we, I've been wanting to update those plans for years, going back to when Glenn Sullivan was over at Public Works. So I think this is a way forward, but I think we could reduce that number, Maria, based on in-house skills and knowledge that I have to be able to fix this thing.
Okay, thank you, Scott.
Okay, so Maria, today what we need is action to say, these are our projects that we will set forth for hazard mitigation. And he left, and I should have asked him also to address this, but Emergency Management, I can certify, does approve and recommend these programs that you have, that have been identified.
So I would need direction on, obviously, there's three projects on the table. So I would need direction on which, you know, which projects, if not all of them, and then identification of, or a commitment for the match requirement.
So the required match cumulatively is, let me double check it. It's 50, 125, 157,500.
Yes.
157,500. Shoreline Erosion is my number one.
Based on what Scott said for the shoreline erosion and dune protection, that 37,000 match could possibly be in-kind. You know, we would have to kind of work through those numbers. But, you know, he's mentioning in-house expertise, and that could be included as in-kind.
Well, we could certainly use what we've been spending with Conrad Blutcher Institute as our in-kind match, which is substantial.
Right. So I will tell you that from our vetting of this, shoreline erosion and potable water are absolutely just number one and number two, and they fight for number ones each. They're just so different. But when it comes to the resiliency of this courthouse during emergencies, the potable water is absolutely critical. And of course, shoreline erosion and dune protection is a major component to protecting all of our infrastructure on the coast. So those are my one and two. I'm in favor of, you know, all three. And I'll make the motion for all three and ask that there be a second. And then we can talk funding as soon as we do that. Okay, a motion and a second. And then the discussion is, is what is the funding? So, you know, if awarded, you know, that would be highly unlikely. But anyway, if awarded, Dale, it looks like the exposure could be 137,500. Would any, do you have any identification of, I can tell you that, you know, we could, we could use government services to?
Normally, most of our grant matches come from a transfer from the general fund that we budgeted every year. This year, we also budgeted around $125,000 or more for transfers for options of grants. Some of them are awarded, some of them are not. We do have other options should they come around. As you said, Judge, we have some other options that we could take some funds out, but majority of the time it would be a general fund funded match.
All right. Well, with that being said, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion or questions for Maria? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Thank you.
Okay, good luck. We'll see how we do. All right. We'll hear now from Public Works and move on to the selection. Item number one of Govend Development LLC for professional engineering services relating to the reconstruction of County Road 26 and consider approval of the proposal. And then please note for the record that item two is 26, and then item, I'm sorry, number one is 26 and number two is 26A. And tell us more about the project.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. The projects for, these projects are going to be about 1,500 linear feet for 26. It's going to be a reconstruction of a road. We're recommending that Govan is the engineer on the project, and that's Public Works' recommendation, and that's for County Road 26.
All right. And do you want to go over the cost and the funding source?
The funding source, the cost is going to be $14,850. And the funding source is going to be from COs, Commissioner's COs.
Okay, $14,850 for item number one?
Yes, ma'am.
And then 26, and then that's Commissioners', which Commissioner?
Uh, Gonzalez, sorry.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm not working with Teresa right now.
And you're working with Teresa? And Teresa, what's the number? Sorry, we need it for the record.
The 2015 COs.
Okay, 2015. All right. And, okay, is there a motion then to approve? And I'll second. And thank you, Govan, for being here. And if anybody has any questions regarding the work, we happen to have the engineer who will be overseeing the work. Okay, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And on item number two, again, it looks very similar, just 26A, the extension of 26.
The, this is going to be also a road construction improvements on 26A. Judge, this one's a little bit longer. I notice it gets about a mile stretch.
Okay.
And it's going to be within the same engineering design, reconstruction of the road. And we're recommending Govan and Associates for the project.
And so are we going to redo the road? This is not very much money, so is it just a resurfacing?
No, ma'am, on this one, it's going to be full reconstruction.
Full reconstruction? Okay, so what's the price on this one?
For the design, it's going to be $49,600.
Okay. That's more in keeping. Okay.
And the COs, it's going to be Teresa, sorry.
Is it going to be 2015?
That's correct.
Is it also Commissioner Gonzalez?
That's correct.
All right. Okay, so do we have a motion for the approval of this particular motion? And what about a second?
Second.
Multiple seconds, whoever you heard first. And any further discussion with regards to these roads? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Is discuss and consider selection of Govan Development LLC, professional engineering related to the construction of Hazel Bazemore Dog Park?
Yes, ma'am. Judge and Commissioners, Public Works is recommending Govan Development LLC for the engineering project for the reconstruction, for construction of the Hazel Bazemore Dog Park. And it's a recommendation from Public Works.
Okay.
I'll move.
And is there a funding source and also the amount?
On the funding source, Judge, I know that we're probably going to end up using the previous funding source. I don't have that.
Okay, well, if you could, just get it for us, Teresa. It's the original one? You could do it after lunch. We could get it to supplement the record, but.
I apologize for that.
That's all right. Just remember that.
This is just a selection, Judge.
That's true. It's just a selection. When we get the contract, we'll come back. But I always like to know, and people like to know where we're moving from. Okay, so in regards to the selection of Govan Development LLC, is there a motion? We already got a motion over here? Him and then Commissioner Hernandez, will you, you're going to second? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I just want to bring up this concept that as long as we're here, would you be amenable to please exploring the parking lot? The toilet facilities? And the, when you say the park, I'm thinking it's just the dog park because that's how it was listed. But in order for any dog park to get approved for ADA, we have to address the parking lot. We have to address the restroom facilities, and we have to rest the sidewalk. I think if you're going to do it, maybe this is the time to do it.
Yes, Judge and Commissioners, there's two separate, well, really, there's three, well, two contracts that are for the, well, one for the restroom is Adura Engineering.
Adura?
Yes, ma'am. They're the ones that are doing the restroom and the parking space for the restroom facilities. And then also Adura's doing the splash pad that they're, also is part of the, not part of the work, but it's a different scope of work for that. So Adura's doing the parking lot.
So.
In regards to the park, to the dog park itself, it'll be part of Govan Development's scope of work to do the parking lot for the dog park itself.
That's important, I think, to note.
So it's parking lot, it's sidewalk, and park. Correct.
Three things.
Correct.
Okay, I think that's important to note for the record.
Sorry about that.
That's all right. I think that that's much more clear, and now we have a pathway forward to getting this ADA approval. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners.
All right. We're going to move on to getting an update from the county auditor relating to the County Health Self-Insurance Fund and related matters and discuss and consider funding options. This is item D1 from the auditor.
Thank you. I provided for you four pages for our particular funds. The one page is showing that our current funds for our health insurance funds has a deficit of $1,151,883.65. We're trying to cover with the funding options of how to overcome that. Several reasons for this events, we had several catastrophic injuries and other events that caused some other items, as well as some COVID-related activities that caused this large deficit. We are currently working with our Hagerty as well as other issues to try to recover some of the COVID-related expenses. We're not guaranteed whether that will happen or not. So we still need to do some funding sources for this. Working with Tomas and myself and the judge to try to come up with some good policies on how to fund this balances. As you see on the page I provide you, there's some balances for our assets and liabilities for each of our funds. We have three departments within our self-insurance fund. The Department 101 is our workers' compensation fund. 0102 is our general liability, which covers our building insurance as well as auto insurance. And 0103 is our health insurance fund. And you see our workers' compensation fund has got a significantly large fund balance, and they earned over $124,000 increase this year. Our general liability has $187,000 fund balance with a $70,000 increase this year. So on the first page, we're going to go in and try to transfer some of those funds over to help cover the funding, right around $451,000. Now, that still leaves a shortage. So I provide you a list of providing additional funding from all funds that provide balances to our general liability for our health insurance. General Fund, Road Fund, our special revenue funds, the law library, anybody that has health insurance that is pissed for it. I'm planning on taking some fundings for that. Well, I need additional $700,000 funding coming from that. So I provide you a breakdown that this is where the money's going to be requested to come with this. Of the $700, for example, the general fund would be contributing $586,000, which is the largest, of course. Our road fund would be around $41,000. Our special revenue fund is $19,000. As you go down, you'll see the additional balances. With these balances, we'll have $151,884 additional funding, which basically will mean we have a net zero balance, fund balance for our liability building. I've worked with Tomas and myself and the judge. We're looking at next year with the plans that we did in the budget cycle where y'all increased the premium pays, as well as, as we renegotiated some contracts with a, a sponsor, sponsor network and an edna network, and as well as some of our prescription network claims. We believe that we, we will have a significant funds next year where this will not be an issue. But however, for this particular fiscal year, we need this additional funding. So I'm bringing this funding to you as an option of how we, we, we need to, to fund this to, to try to get to a net zero balances of our, our, our general, general health insurance liability. I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have, but this is the funding that I'm proposing to try to, to resolve that debt, net, net, net deficit. Sorry. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I have the advantage, I've already gone over it with you, so I'm just going to ask for any questions at this time regarding the, as they say, that the, the data that's in front of you, or any matter related there, too.
So you're going to keep working on it, bring it back when you come up with specific, I mean.
Well, no, I think he's, he's given you.
That's how I'm going to use to try to fund that, that deficit. However, next year, y'all increase the premium, the, the premiums for the employer's side of it, as well as if anyone stayed on the current edna plan, they, they get an additional $480. So those claims, as well as the renegotiation of our contract, when, when Michael Tomas brought the contracts up for, for our, our third-party administrator and our, our, our prescription, they had some savings in those. So those savings now, in our particular audit, saying that, that if those savings does occur and we don't have a significant number of large claims, we do not believe this will ever be an issue again. In the future.
And so what are you wanting us to do today?
I need to, I need to have your permission that I will need to transfer $700,000 from the option of the funds that we've shown above, as well as transfer some additional of the resources from the other two funds within our self-insurance fund for a total amount coming into our, our general liability fund for our group health of $1,151,884.
Doesn't seem like we have much choice.
Unfortunately, no, we don't. But we're still, we're still fighting with, with, with TDM. We're still fighting with, with FEMA and others with, with, when we had the CARES Act and, and they told us we would not be able to recover COVID-related expenses in our health insurance. I know Tomas is constantly working with this, and we, we constantly have other avenues to try to recover some of this, and we may. But there is never any guarantee for our, on our health insurance side of it.
But this is not.
Is this the amount we're in, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Is this the amount we're in debt? How much, how much are we behind on this thing here? I understood, I understood with 1.7 million.
We're 1.1, we, we, if you look at the income statement, we actually were, we're in a deficit of, of 1.8 million. Well, actually, we, we, we lost $2 million in total funds because our fund balance last year was 849,000. Our net loss was over 2 million, but if you take out the, the premium balance we had, we're, we're currently at a negative $1,151,000. With this funding option that we're asking you to do, that will basically give you a zero balance there. It'll actually give you 40 cents.
I mean, this is good news because what he's saying is, is that if you'll refer, I don't know if it's, I don't know if there's a page number on there, but.
I'm sorry, page numbers.
That's okay. But if you'll just turn to your, to your, you know, D1 backup data, you'll see that what we need is 1151, and you'll see how he's going to get 1151. It comes 700,000 from one source, which is the transfer from the general fund. And, and again, you might ask yourself, why? Hold on, let me, if you don't mind, let me grab this stuff because I want to refer to it. Why are we doing this? It's the same thing that we do. We, we're allocating by department their pro-rata share for insurance.
That's right.
And so you, you look at the general fund, road and bridge, special revenue, law library, airport, inland, coastal, grants, and juvenile, and you see the apportionment per capita, right? How many people are in those departments? And you get a total of $700,000. And that 700,000 coupled with the 351 and the 100 make up the deficit without us, without it hurting us fiscally overall. So we need 1151, and here is the plan on how you're going to get it and get a net balance of zero, well, 40 cents, almost zero. And so while, the good news is, is that because we have contributed more as a county for next year's premium, plus the opportunity to receive discount slash rebates, we should, barring any catastrophic losses, which are always potentially possible, we should be doing good. Now, we'd always like to see more reserves, but now this is a real plan of how we're going to get back to a balanced budget for health.
And so Dale, explain to me again. I, I understand that the additional funding from the, the departments, and then the additional transfers from 101 and 102, which I'm looking at those. And can you define for me again? I, I, I don't see where it says what 101 is. It just says cash and cash equivalent investments. What, what is 101?
Department 101 is our workers' compensation fund.
102?
102 is our general liability, which is, covers our, our windstorm insurance, our, our car insurances, as well as any, any damages that are county-related.
Explain to me again the logic on taking it from those funds and not just taking all of it from the above funds?
Those funds were already funded by their own sources from the general fund. They're already been funded by contributions we have. For example, workers' comp is based on all of our, our payroll issues that we, we, we put in. We, we always based on a certain rate of what we determined from risk management. We, we put in a claim, and then I think it's, the Texas Association of Counties is our workers' compensation claim. Maybe, maybe it'd be different this time, but they submit us a bill, and normally this is our bill, and our bill is usually less than what our contributions are. Now, our contributions come from general fund, road fund, so it's already been money that we've already put over there for this particular function, but wasn't needed.
So.
So we're just saying we can use those funds that were already part of the, the general fund and stuff as, as operating fund for this other fund.
And I may not be asking it right because, and I may not just be understanding it. So let's say that we didn't have, in other words, why wouldn't, let me ask it this way. Why wouldn't we take everything from the eight categories or whatever there are above? Why wouldn't we take it all from that? Or why wouldn't we take it all from 101 or 102? That's what I'm trying to understand.
Take all from 101, 102 because the fund balances for 0101 and 0102 is only at 500,000. I need 1.1 million.
For 101 and 102 combined?
Yes.
Okay, and then, so why, and then go ahead and then answer on the top part.
We can't, it's your option. I was, I was trying to reduce the amount of, of impact on the operating funds for, for this fiscal year since we're in a pandemic and some of them were, were not as, as beneficial as they would like to have been. And we can definitely take 100% of the 1, 1.15 million from all the funds. I just wanted to give you a different option that, that these funds are already sitting in our health insurance fund based on workers' comp or general liability, and they're not being used. So we're just moving it over to where they can be used.
And that's fine. I'm just, that's why I'm asking is I, I just didn't understand how the, how you came to the recommendation of where to take it from. So by taking it, by taking the money out of 101 and 102, does that put that fund in any kind of financial danger, for lack of a better way of asking it?
The fund balance for 0101, if you go, you should see a, a balance sheet on there. Currently, our fund balance for 0101 is 468,933. If we take only 300,000 from that, that leaves me 161, 68,000. Same thing for the 102 has got a fund balance of $187,000. If I only take 100,000 of that, it's 87,000. We always put in 100% of our, our, our claims for our, our insurance, so that, that would never be an issue. So I don't believe there, there, there's an issue here for, for moving those funds from those particular funds. But we'll be glad to do, handle this, have a huge, saw fit. I just believe that this is the best way of handling it.
Okay. And so, and then tell me, going up to the, the top categories, what would be the downside of taking the 1.151 from all of those categories? What would be the downside there?
Just, the only issue is, once we start getting into these small funds like your law library, your airport fund, and your inland and coastal parks, most of them are funded by the general fund anyway. And their, their fund balances are very small. So if you increase to 1.5 million, you're actually increasing the amount of contributions from the law library from 1,100 to close to 10,100. So doubling, almost tripling the amount of, of, of resources we're taking from their, their current fund balances.
That, the, like, what would be the, in your opinion, the truest way of showing where these expenses are coming from? I get what you're trying to do, and I'm not, I mean, that's a great suggestion. But what would be the truest way of showing what it's actually costing us to do this? Would it be doing it out of all out of this? Or is it doing it the way you're saying? Because I, I just want to make sure that we're doing it that shows what it's actually costing to run each department, for lack of a better way of saying it.
We, we, we can definitely do this, the situation as you're saying for, for, we can do 100% out of all the operating funds. Now, that will may, that possibly may mean that the general fund will exceed their 83% because, as I said, some of these are, are very low in funds to begin with. So we may have to transfer, the transfers all out of the general fund and reducing the fund balance out of the general fund by whatever it might, might be. But, and, and funding the, for, for, for myself and, and working with risk management and Tomas, the fund balance in 101, which is our workers' compensation, almost half a million dollars, it might be excessive. And maybe what we can do is, if we don't do this transfer, next year I can work with my staff and risk management and reducing our contributions from, from, from this year's budget. But that's just something we need to determine. I just thought there was excess funds in both these accounts that would basically help us to fund this shortage with doing the least amount of damage to the other funds from, from this current year.
Do you believe that the funds that we would be taking from 101 and 102 are, it's a justifiably meaning it's, it's paying for what it should be paying for?
What we, what we do on our, all these balances are for workers' compensation. If we have a large workers' compensation claim, that, that's never an issue because that comes out of your general, general fund or other liability. So this is just to pay for our premiums that we pay to, it was Texas Association of Counties. I think we changed it, then I think we're changing it back to Texas, Texas Association of Counties. So they bill us every year based on this. We base our contributions that we pay that as a, as a employee benefit that the county pays for workers' comp, and we put it in and we stop it, but where we believe is the funds necessary. As you saw, and, and if we can do you a, a history, every year we probably exceed the amount of, of the expenses by right, right around $100,000 every year. So that, this fund constantly increases every year. So that's something that, that I felt that we're already contributing to this, to this particular fund and to workers' compensation, general liability. You know, why try to, in, in this pandemic, try to hit these funds additionally harder than we can? But this can be how it went.
It's a good, that's a good dialogue. I appreciate it. Thank you.
So the, the matter that's before us is to consider this funding option that really solves the problem. So is there?
Do you have a question?
Yes.
Dale, you know, always, my fear is always that we barf somewhere and then we can't ever put it back. If we take it 100,000, we leave in 88,000 on the general liability. Something happens. I'm just saying something happened, could happen, that our liability is going to be more than 88,000. Where are we going, where are we going to go to?
Now, this general liability covers certain areas. As I mentioned, it's our, our funding sources for our, our, our insurance for windstorm and our, our flood insurance, as well as our car insurance. We, we always make sure we work with Michael and his staff on how much is, is needed, and we always budget that amount issued. I work with the county attorney every year on what our estimated claims liability would be for lawsuits pending. And we always fund those, those lawsuits that we transfer funds to cover the pending estimated liability for, for that. And that's always covering. So we believe that the funds that are there are, are there now. Now, I'm not saying if we, if we have, you know, a, a, a lot of the stuff has to do, if, if, depends on what was insured, not insured. So for example, if we have a car damage, so we run into someone or, or something happens, or we run, whatever it might be the case, and we're liable for it, that's where these, where these funds come out of. Then we also work with our insurance companies to try to help pay for some of this as well. And we have general liability to cover that. That's for, this covers our damage on our, on our vehicles, not theirs. So our liability insurance covers that. So we don't ever think there's an issue that we would be a catastrophic enough event to cause this to be indefinite.
And same thing with the workman's comp. You know, we, again, I don't deem we have a problem with the workman's comp. Last year, that, that there was enough money there, that.
We, we have the, we have the money that there was, there was a dispute with, with, I believe the county attorney's working with, with them on, on the issue with the law enforcement side of it because of how our current providers pay their workers' compensation based on our collective bargaining agreement, as well as the law saying that, how we have to pay law enforcement issue. And that became an issue, I believe. Michael and them are working on, as well as, as Timothy's working on, going back to the Texas, Texas Association of Counties for that. So they pay 100% of the workers' compensation for law enforcement related. So, so that was the only issue I was aware of. We've never been in a deficit where we cover the problem where there's, we always have enough money to pay for the liability that, that the, whoever our, our insurance provider is, provides a, a claim every year, and we always have sufficient funds to cover it.
So you are not concerned, you believe this to be a funding proposal that gets us the dollars that we need without having any, you know, I guess, it, the benefits outweigh any of the risk at this point.
That's my, my, my proposal is.
So in that case.
My last question would be on the insurance. Is this, how, is this affecting also the insurance? Because I think last year or this, this year, we were, didn't have enough money. That's why we raised the insurance and asked the employees to pay more. So what, what money, the insurance, what, is there any monies coming out of the insurance to pay anything else?
For our health insurance, it covers all of our, our third-party administrators, our, our, our medical claims, our prescription claims, and then our, our contracts with the SPA Network, as well as the edna networks. And that was all part of the agreed contract we have. So there's nothing else that would be additional cost that, we have also the, I think Helo flight was there, as well as teledoc, well-mid, and some other issues that are all, all coming out of that. But that's all part of a agreed-upon contract we've had now.
So you're saying everything's okay with our self-insurance? As far as is our, is our balances, are we okay?
Well, once we, when, last year, during the budget cycle, y'all approved an increase in premium on the employer's side of a significant amount. I believe it was anywhere from 1.5 to 1.7 million additional money coming in, as well as anyone that, that is on the current edna network there, if they wanted to stay on the edna network, it basically contributed another 480 on their side, that's the employee's side of it. So it is a small increase on the employee's side, but a large increase on the employer's side. And working with Tomas, Michael, and, and myself, we saw that there's going to be savings in our claims because of our agreement with SPA Network. In our agreement with edna network, we're going to see anywhere from 600 to 800,000 dollar savings. We know our prescription claims have some, some small savings, but we expect that to be a little bit higher because of the way we renegotiate our contracts. So we foresee that next year, with, with, what the court did and what we know the savings might be, we don't believe this will be an issue unless there's a significant number of catastrophic injuries. And you can never control that.
That's what I'm just saying, it could happen. It could happen.
It could happen.
Right. But, but the, the purpose of the county putting forth all of the extra dollars that we did, which was close to a million and a half dollars, is to restore the health of our cash reserves that were drained under COVID-19. And in addition, we have a $2 million, not quite, but almost a $2 million claim on COVID-19 that we hope that we can recover as lost revenue. We have those claims still out there. But in an effort to make sure that we're fully keeping up with the expense of healthcare, we've taxed ourself, if you will, right? We've put the burden on not employees, we've put it on us to the max. Employees get to choose whether they use the EPO, which costs nothing, or the PPO, which costs $40 a month. So it's, it's better said that we have restored our own cash reserves to prepare for any catastrophic situations that sometimes occur in a fiscal year and sometimes don't. But today, what's before us is a method to get us back to zero, and it still gives us plenty of balance with regards to workman's comp and to general liability. So as I say, every once in a while, your, your ability to save, keeping your savings accounts healthy are important. Our savings accounts throughout, well, this, this particular paper indicates that we're able to get us back to net neutral, which is zero, 40 cents.
Dale, question for you. On the general fund category?
Yes.
That's then taking 586,879 out of the general fund. Is that coming out of just reserves? Is that coming out of?
Coming out of reserve. When, when I'm, I'm, I'm bringing you the, the numbers very soon for our September 30th year end. Right now, we're still compiling our, our transaction entries, but right now, we're, we're seeing anywhere from 1.5 to $2 million increase in fund balance. So this 500,000 will be a small reduction. So we should still see a, a significant increase in fund balance from last year to this year.
So with the $2 million fund balance increase in 586, you're still going to see about a million four, a million five? That's why I say we're.
Yeah, that's kind of what's the reason for the question, was to kind of see where we were going because we certainly don't want to knock down our reserves after we've worked so hard to build them up. And it sounds like, you know, even with this, but again, there's times we have to get, tap into your reserves when you have emergencies. And this is obviously classified to me as an emergency is obviously classified to me as an emergency, because if you've got a one point one million dollar deficit, you got to figure out a way to fund it. So it so that's an important point to make, that you still think even with this five eighty-six that we're going to still end up ahead.
Even with this, I've I've got the numbers in, I've got a few more accrual entries to do and a few more transfers to do, but my last numbers were anywhere from one point five to one point seven increase. So if we deduct this, I'm anywhere from one point one to one point three million dollar increase in fund balance. So from last year to this year, it's what go from twenty-five to around twenty-six to twenty-seven.
Thanks, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Which is a huge, I mean, if you think about COVID-19 and and all the losses, and we still get to book a, you know, plus million dollar positive addition to our our reserves.
Judge, I...
I think that's a good, it's a good result.
My apologies. I was just going to make a motion to pass this.
Motion in a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. Discuss and consider, is the sheriff, I don't see him on, Belinda.
This is against my office, Your Honor. This is the this is the we did last commissioners' court.
John needs to show his face to vote.
He is, he's got his little tiny...
He is, he's real tiny, I see him.
Oh, I couldn't even see it either. I didn't know what that was. I thought that was like his thumb. Sorry. I truly did, I thought it was his thumb.
It's kind of like Alice in Wonderland, but yeah, thank you, Commissioner Modest. All right, so now we're going to move to discuss and consider approving the federal equitable sharing agreement certification for the Sheriff Department. And Dale, go ahead.
The last commissioners' court, we had the federal, this is federal side only. We will bring the state probably on the fifteenth. This is the federal agreement with the sheriff's office that we brought in similar to the district attorney, as well as one of the or two of the constables last week. This is a report that they must submit to the the federal issues to be able to to continue their their sharing agreement that shows their their amount of contributions. My staff has worked with the sheriff's office, and the numbers comply with what the information that we have provided for it. We need this so they can continue their federal sharing, and I submit this approval, this for your approval, Your Honor.
All right.
So moved.
And what about a second?
Second.
All right, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. At this time, I'd like to confirm with Belinda and the clerk, I see no other matter before us on the regular agenda, other than the ones that we'll address when we come out of executive session. And so I'll move towards making the announcements for executive session, but first, recognizing that it's eleven-thirty, and we've done awesome, I would like to say that I'll read the magic language and ask for at least ten minutes before we come back into executive session so that those of us that haven't moved can use the ladies' room and get a cup of water, and we will be back. So at this time, I give public notice that the commissioners' court may elect to go into executive session, as provided for by provisions of the Open Meetings Act, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. We do so, and I publicly announce this as the presiding officer, in accordance with the authority of the government codes, Vernon's Sections 551, oh seven one, seven two, seven three, seven four, seven five, seven six, eight six, and eight seven, we do so at this time, announce that we're going into executive session to consult with our attorney regarding matters relating to litigation, real property, gifts, personnel termination, county advisory bodies, security devices, and economic development negotiations, in addition to any other matter that has been discussed, that may be discussed properly in executive session. Upon completion, we will come out of executive session, and we may take, the commissioners' court may opt to take action as appropriate on items that were discussed in executive session for the clerk. The time is eleven-twenty-nine a.m. I'm gabbling us out, and again, I'd ask for just ten minutes before we report back here. Connie, take us off the air and keep thinking Modest is coming in, but he's not. Commissioner Modest had to step out, so he won't be joining us. So, okay, we're back on the record at twelve-thirty-six p.m., and we've come out of executive session, and I do certify, we still have a quorum. Commissioner Modest had to step out, and we do have a few action items to handle from executive session. And the first is that the, let me read from it. The item F, we already have a fraud policy review committee. It was established by this court in 2019, but we do recognize that Commissioner Vaughn is no longer a member of Commissioners Court, and therefore, we need a replacement, and the court wishes to make a motion at this time. Court?
So move the chancellor to be appointed to the committee.
Could you say it again so they can?
So move the commissioner, chancellor to be appointed to the committee.
Chesney in lieu of Commissioner Vaughn? Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
A motion and a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. And and then the next action is with regards to the item E, and that's the amending the Nueces County Personnel Policy Manual, and Commissioner Chesney wanted to visit with Julie Garra, HR Director, or a member of her staff, so that they can discuss potential amendments to the personnel policy for processes regarding department heads when complaints are filed. And Julie is not in the office right now, but we're trying to get her online.
They said she would be joining.
So we'll just, but the the motion, you can inform her in a minute, but the action is just to work with HR Director with regards to that and have the county attorney, you know, help help HR with the proper processes so that they can be better defined.
Yeah, I just want to ask her some questions when she's on, Judge, so related to the policy. So if you want to go to the, I think we were just going to table numbers, the one that you wanted to table.
Right, why don't we move on to that? So there's no other action that's that's needed out of executive session, except for the tabling of item number?
Judge, I did want to kind of make it maybe in in a motion possibly, so I do want to wait until Julie gets on to make sure that...
That's fine, I'll just come back to that.
If you don't mind.
Item number six is motion to table item number six to December fifteenth. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, post same sign. And again, item number eight, we already made that motion. Item number seven, we're waiting on. When I say item number seven, I do mean from the regular agenda. Those were three items that were noticed in the regular agenda and also in the executive, and we've already dealt with six and eight, and we're waiting on seven. I'm going to reopen public comment at this time while we're waiting for Ms. Garra, and at this time, I'd like to make two public comments on behalf of Nueces County. One is that on the first floor and on the third floor, we're partnering again this year, thanks to Judge Joe Benavides and the United States Marine Corps with Toys for Tots, and I'm inviting all county employees to share in the spirit of giving by looking at those boxes that are a little empty right now, but as we start December tomorrow, let's fill them up to the brim and let them overflow with love for the children, ranging in age of children, babies, all the way to age fourteen. And then the Marines will come by and pick them up and disseminate them, I believe, on the eighteenth, is what I think they told me. And a lot of work goes into the dissemination of which toys are appropriate for which children, and in the delivery of those, and our own Nueces County Social Services is very much involved with the Christmas Appeal, and and they've got that simultaneous good program working as well. So if you're so inclined, the box is outside Commissioners' courtroom on the third floor, and on the first floor, it's downstairs as well, Toys for Tots.
I want to just mention one thing. The first floor, I'm partnering with Supercuts, and thanks to the constables for allowing to use this space. So I've sent out a email to all the employees at whatever they can to drop off toys at all the boxes, but I am sponsoring the one on the first floor with Supercuts, and they asked me to partner with them, and I did, and the constables are also helping with that. There's a lot of toys there, so thank you very much for those that given toys, and appreciate it.
Yeah, it's great. So as they say, if you don't have little ones, this is a great excuse to go toy shopping.
Give somebody else.
To give to somebody. So anyway, that's the first public comment. The second is, the United Corpus Christi Chamber of Commerce is sponsoring State of the County on December the eighth, and if there is a need to get more information, we're going to invite you to seek out the website of the United Corpus Christi Chamber of Commerce, and if you have any questions regarding seats or availability, you can go through that website, or please contact our office, but it's a great opportunity to showcase all that we have been able to accomplish. We were not able to do State of the County for the last two years, so we've only done it once, and this is a great chance to really find out more about the county's successful ventures despite a global pandemic and so many other extreme weather and social challenges. So anyway, those are the two pieces of public comment. Commissioners, if you do not already have a seat, I'm certain that the chamber can arrange one for you. I know some of you have already RSVP'd and are already in that process, so. Okay, those are the last two things, so I'll close public comment, and welcome. Julie cannot come.
Hi, this is Melinda.
Yes.
Julie was going to call in.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Well, I'm waiting, I'll just...
Can you just take it?
Yeah, let me just say this, for the interest of time, what we'd like to do is set forth some some concepts that will hopefully develop into maybe a relook and a potential amendment to personnel policy that would lay forth the processes with regards to complaints issued against department heads. And so if Julie would make herself available when she gets back into town to visit with the county attorney, the county attorney heard all of the concerns that the court has, and hopefully together, they can put their heads together and develop a more clearly defined process and policy.
Judge, I'm sorry.
And that's that's part of it. And Commissioner Chesney would like to ask, would like to offer a comment.
I'm sorry, Judge. Yeah, I would just like to make it in the form of a motion that that the HR Director develop a specific policy or amend the specific policy that we have as to when a complaint is levied against a department head, how that would work in regards to going through HR and HR being the fact-finder, et cetera, and then presentation to the court. So I would just like to make that in the form of the motion, if that's if that's clear enough for the county clerk.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, great. So in that case, if you'd report back to her and maybe, you know, at our next court, she can give us an update on her progress of how she's going to go about doing all those good things.
Okay, I'll get with her.
All right, grateful. All right, at this time, I'm going to move to adjournments and memory. We have two very important ones, and it's hard to believe that in just a few weeks, you could lose two people that mean so much and have meant so much to Nueces County because of their dedicated service. I'd like to read the very first adjournment in memory, and it's in honor of a dear friend and a great jurist and a member of my profession, the bar. Robert M. Blackman, Judge Blackman. A wise navigator once wrote, "An unseen hand can rise at any moment from an unexpected point of the compass and strike us down." After fighting an eighteen-month illness and having a short hospitalization, the Honorable Robert Blackman passed away quietly on Friday, the nineteenth of November, 2021, in Houston, Texas. With the many hats that he would wear, Robert was commonly known as Dad, Daddy, Grampy, Bob, Your Honor, Judge, Skipper, and Captain. He was born in Beaumont, Texas, to attorneys Jack and Margaret Blackman. Robert's family moved to Corpus Christi when he was four years old, after graduating Ray High School and while attending Southern Methodist University. He met Marta, an international law student from Buenos Aires, Argentina. She was attending the university, working on her Masters of Comparative Law, and would become his lifelong love. He graduated SMU in nineteen sixty-five with law and business degrees, and in nineteen sixty-six, received a Navy certification. That same year, Robert and Marta married in Argentina and were by each other's sides until his passing. They celebrated their fifty-fifth wedding anniversary just days prior to his hospitalization. Robert was an active-duty Navy lawyer from nineteen sixty-five to nineteen seventy-two. He was directly commissioned as lieutenant and had assignments that included the Fifth Naval District Headquarters in Norfolk, Virginia, and the Southern Command in Panama. Until Navy retirement, twenty years later, he was in the Ready Reserves and served a military judge unit in Washington, D.C., the NLSO in Corpus Christi, and was a judge advocate in New Orleans, Louisiana. He tried cases in major coastal cities across the United States, in Italy, Sicily, and Greece, and earned the rank of captain, judge advocate, general corps, among others, the captain's personal decorations, including the Joint Service Commendation Medal and the Navy Commendation Medal. From nineteen seventy-three to nineteen seventy-seven, Robert was in private law practice in Corpus Christi with partners Jack North and Jack White. He was licensed to appear before Texas courts, the United States Supreme Court, the United States Appellate Court for the Fifth Circuit, and the Court of Military Appeals. In nineteen seventy-seven, he was selected as Nueces County Outstanding Young Lawyer of the Year, and later that year, was elected judge for the county court at Law Number One. He sat at the bat at the bench uncontested from nineteen seventy-eight to nineteen eighty-five. When his father opened, I'm sorry, when his father opted for retirement from the Hundred and Seventeenth District Court in Nueces County, Robert announced his own bid for his dad's bench. Judge Blackman served as trial judge uncontested in the one-seventeenth from nineteen eighty-six through two thousand and two, when he took senior status. He continued serving as visiting trial judge until his diagnosis of illness in 2020. For his years of service to the community inside and outside the courtroom, the Corpus Christi Bar Association awarded Judge its highest honor, the Cecil E. Bernie Humanitarian Award. This honor annually recognized the county's lawyer or judge who has best served the community. Until recently, Judge remained active with the State Bar of Texas, the Judicial Section of the Texas State Bar, and the Corpus Christi Bar Association. He had a true appreciation for the law and took pleasure in the camaraderie that came with it. Bob was active with the Boy Scouts of America for over seventy-two years. He was an Eagle with three palms and a vigil honor member of the Order of the Arrow. In addition to many other honors, Bob was recognized as a Silver Beaver and had received the Silver Pisano for his work promoting international scouting. The Catholic Diocese of Corpus Christi awarded him the Saint George Emblem to recognize achievements by Catholic scouts. He served as an explorer, sea scout advisor, scout master, and for various committees. Scouting was very important to Bob, and he stuck by the oath which states, "On my honor, I will do my best to do my duty to God, my country, and to obey the scout all, law, and to help other people at all times, to keep myself physically strong, mentally awake, and morally straight." He always taught others to abide by the same promise. In nineteen eighty-two, the skipper began sailing with friends in the Wednesday night races and was immediately hooked. He quickly learned sailing's rudimentary lessons of discipline, confidence, patience, and respect of others and the environment. Eventually, the skipper became a ski scout leader, and for more than twenty-two years, taught teenagers how to sail and how to apply sailing concepts to everyday life. He had the pleasure of maintaining friendships with many of his sea scouts until his passing. In nineteen ninety-one, the skipper and his crew provided a BSA Life Saving Recognition for rescuing a drowning man from Corpus Christi Bay. Until he came off the water in late 2019, he spent countless of hours on the bay, single-hand sailing the lollygag. The skipper always welcomed an extra hand onboard, or just a willing, or just a friend willing to lend an ear and enjoy a cruise. When he wasn't on the water, he would pass the time with Marta, walking, reading, writing, traveling, and doing most anything outdoors. Two of them loved visits with their grandchildren, Matt, Sophia, Julia, Charlotte, Charlotte, Rex, Brigitte, Ella, and Rusty. Grampy was thrilled to be a part of every aspect of their busy lives and was full of pride to see each of them succeeding with various endeavors. Dad was partial to having adventures other than those derived from sailing. He was fascinated with the Sangre de Cristo mountain range in New Mexico, and along with many trips to Santa Fe, completed several multi-week multi-week treks to the Philmont Ranch near Cimarron. The Philmont Ranch, by the way, is the former Boy Scout Ranch. One of his most favorite adventures was together with his daughter and sudden-law Pat, paddling over ninety miles of the ten thousand lakes, the forest, and hills of northeastern Minnesota and Ontario. Judge Blackman enjoyed wing shooting with the boys, swimming laps at the Y or Santa Fe Swim Club, and was an almost daily feat. He was a Texas history buff and well-versed in state and national politics. Westerns were his movie of choice, and above all, he loved to visit and chat. He had the ability to maintain a conversation with anyone about almost anything. He was often called upon for speeches and talks and was known for his prayers at the Rotary Club of Corpus Christi. He was very proud of his four children, Analia Blackman, who's a doctor, married to Patrick Foy and two children, Will Blackman, an engineer, manager of software engineering, two children, Henry Blackman, trial attorney, married to Morgan Blackman, Corpus Christi, Belinda, a reading specialist with Cleaver and ISD, and she resides in Cleaver with her husband Blaine and their four children. A private family service will be held in Houston on the fourth of December, and due to concerns, new concerns with the pandemic, at a later date, a celebration of life will be held at the Corpus Christi Yacht Club, and in due course, Robert's cremated remains will be scattered into Corpus Christi Bay. The family wishes to thank many people that took care of their father, specifically the doctors and nurses that looked after him in his final days from Houston Methodist Hospital System. Finally, the family asked me to remind everybody that their father would often say at the end of his own notes or conversations, so there you have it. So, there you have it. So, I ask all of you on behalf of Noises County and our Noises County family to please visit the Honorable Robert M. Blackman's online memorial tribute. It can be found at the G O H Lewis dot com website. You can offer your own memories, words of comfort, and condolences as they will be shared electronically with this family. I consider it a great honor to be able to read this beautiful obituary prepared by his children for court today and ask that you keep the Blackman family in your prayers. At this time, I'll, uh, yield to Belinda, who has also an equally important obituary and, uh, adjournment in memory today. We are solemn, um, because of the great loss of a great friend and a great public servant, Mr. Steve Waterman. Belinda?
So I'm very, very, um, sad to have to be reading this today, but, um, as y'all all know, Steve was just such a wonderful, wonderful person with so many wonderful attributes that we would all want to emulate. Um, and so I'm privileged to be able to read this for y'all today. Steve and George Waterman went to be with his Lord and Savior on November 26, 2021, at the age of 77. Steve was born in Springfield, Minnesota, on February 14th, 1944, to Lloyd and Levon Waterman. He graduated from Sandburn High School, Mankato State College with a BA in accounting, and the Naval Postgraduate School with an MS in Financial Management. Growing up, Steve loved playing baseball, basketball, and football, particularly baseball, which he excelled in at all levels, including Junior Legion State Tournament twice, high school, local amateur, and college ball. He has been an avid baseball fan, starting with the New York Yankees as a youth, then the Minnesota Twins when they moved to Minnesota in 1960, and now is a diehard Houston Astro fan. Upon graduating from Mankato State College in 1966, Steve began his naval career at the Aviation Officers Candidate School in Pensacola, Florida. And after being commissioned as an ensign, he went on to complete his primary flight training in the Pensacola area. He then completed advanced flight training and received his Wings of Gold at Naval Air Station Corpus Christi, Texas. He married his high school sweetheart, Connie Serfert, in 1964, and they shared most of his years in the Navy, moving from coast to coast. During his naval career, Steve flew the P-3 Orion submarine hunter in patrolling and tracking submarines in waters off the east and west coast, Bermuda, Azores Iceland, Norway, Adak, Alaska, and Hawaii. He was stationed in Pottexent River, Maryland, Pensacola, Florida, Alameda, California, Mountain View, California, Washington, D.C., and Corpus Christi, Texas. In 1986, Steve moved to Corpus Christi to serve his final six years in the Navy as comptroller at Naval Air Station Corpus Christi. He met Pete, Penny Peterson at the naval base, and they were married in 1987. Steve retired at the rank of a Navy commander in 1992, after 26 years of active-duty service. Following retirement from the Navy, Steve's initial employment was with the Noises County Auditor's Office. He then was hired by Noises County Judge Richard Porcherd as his executive assistant for eight years, followed by four years under County Judge Terry Shamsi, and his last 12 years under County Judge Lloyd Neal as Director of Commissioners Court Administration. He recotired in 2018 after 26 years with the county. During his employment with the county, Steve played a major role in the development and execution of the county's annual operating budget. He also was very active in working with department heads in managing the day-to-day operations. Steve was very proud of the role he played in the planning, financing, and construction of capital improvement projects, including Aviator Baseball Stadium, Fairgrounds Complex, Veterans Cemetery, Airport Terminal, and the Outlet Malls. Steve was baptized and confirmed in the Lutheran Church and had an unfailing faith in his Lord and Savior, Jesus. He was extremely involved at Mount Olive Lutheran Church in Corpus Christi, serving as an elder for many years and as a treasurer for over 30 years. Steve is survived by his daughters Lori Stacy and Susan King of Corpus Christi, son Derek Bernie Waterman of Corpus Christi, and daughter Jimmy Hernandez of Goliad, Texas. He is also survived by his best friend, high school sweetheart, and former wife Connie Anderson of Corpus Christi, his brother William Mavis Waterman of Corpus Christi, his sister Jean Leon Hellickson of Albert Lee, uh, Minnesota, his sister-in-law Linda Waterman of Maple Grove, Minnesota, his brother-in-law Huey Dirtil of Sweeney Switch, and his grandchildren Jessica, Will Johnson, Stephanie Ethan Anderson, Summer King, Julian Stacy, Melina Waterman, Preston Hernandez, and great-grandchildren Haley and William Johnston. He is preceded in death by his wife Penny Lee Waterman, his parents, and his brother John Waterman. In lieu of flowers, the family requests that denunciations be made in Steve's memory to Camp Lone Star at either W W dot L O M T dot com or by mail to P O Box 457, LaGrange, Texas, 78945. And his services are gonna be December 6th. Visitation is from 5 to 9 at Funeraria del Angel, which is the old cage mills on Everheart, uh, followed December 7th at noon with the, uh, the funeral at Mount Olive Lutheran Church. And finally, his interment at 2 o'clock at the Veterans Cemetery here in Corpus.
Thank you, Belinda. And to close, uh, no other commissioners have, um, any other adjournments and memory. And to close us this afternoon, I have, uh, selected a, a poem that I know because he wrote to me once, um, when I, uh, read it at a, at another funeral of, of a colleague. And because Steve was also a lover of the sea, I find this one to be very apropos. It's by Alfred Lord Tennyson, and it's called Crossing the Bar. Sunset and evening star, and one clear call for me, and may there be no mooring, and may there be no moaning of the bar when I put out to sea. But such a tide as moving seems asleep, too full for sound and foam, when that which drew from out of the boundless deep turns again home. Twilight and evening bell, and after that the dark, and may there be no sadness of farewell when I embark. For though from out are born of time and place, the flood may bear me far. I hope to see my pilot face to face when I have crossed the bar. Thank you for today's adjournments and memory, and we wish nothing but beautiful memories of these beautiful people to comfort the families of those that are mourning today, of the Blackman.
Judge, I think I wanted, I told you I wanted to say something about Steve, so.
Okay, forgive me. Commissioner, would you like to say something?
First of all, Judge Blackman, I, I consider him also to be, when I was a judge, one of my mentors. And, uh, we met a lot at the Y M C A. That was his hangout. That was my hangout, and we, he always had some stories to tell, too. All kinds of stories and a lot of history. So my prayers and condolences to the Judge Blackman's family. Uh, also, Steve Waterman, I'd like to say, working with Steve was, uh, something very, very special because, uh, Steve, uh, really was on top of a lot of things. He was always helping. If he had money, he'd tell you. If he didn't have money, he'd tell you also, we don't have money. You need to find it somewhere else. Steve really, uh, was a kind of a special guy in a way. Uh, he was firm, but he was good. He really enjoyed living out there and, uh, between George West and Mathers, where he moved to after he retired. You know, and, uh, I would speak to him once in a while. And, um, and really enjoyed, at least got to enjoy some of his retired life. So, uh, the Waterman family and, and their close friends, and I just want to say our prayers and condolences. And again, I thank Steve for everything he did for the county, Noises County. He did a lot. You know, he did a lot more than people know what he did. And I know he worked real close with Dale, uh, on, on the, on the budget. So, again, my, my prayers to the Waterman family.
And again, we'll post, um, an everyone, uh, email regarding the funeral services for Steve Waterman here this afternoon.
Yes, that information has been forwarded to HR.
It has. All right. Okay. Again, um, we thank you for court today. The time is 1:03 p.m. and we are adjourned.